And it's traditional that we say the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask the K kids to come on out here and say the pledge with me. These girls raised money for the Red Cross for the hurricanes. And they're from Weathersfield Elementary. And we're all gonna say the pledge of allegiance, right, girls? All right. If you all stand, please. And put your hands over your hearts. And let's turn a little bit and face the flag over there. There we go. All right. Let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Hey, that was good. Let's hear it for these girls. Thank you again, girls. And we're gonna hear from you just a little bit later about the things you've done to help the Red Cross. Now, let us have the roll call, if you please.
Councilmember Engler.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Protam Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Mayor Adam.
And I'm here, thank you. We do have two continuances this evening. We're gonna see Chief Hagel in January. He's retiring, and we wanna pay tribute to him. And we also have a public hearing that's been continued. The solid waste recycling and disposal ordinance, that's going to be continued to January 14th. Can I get a motion for continuance on that, please? Bob?
Yes. Can we please move to continue both those items?
All right, thank you. Motion on the floor. Call for the vote. And that passes.
Mayor, if you could state your vote, and I'll go ahead and record it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, Councilmember McCoy. The motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you. All right, very good. And now, I'm going to head to the podium for some special presentations. Good evening again. And this evening, we have Graham Watts with us here today. Graham, you'd come on up. Graham is the emergency services coordinator. And for the past 10 years, the City of Thousand Oaks and the Ventura County Fire Department have coordinated with the Community Emergency Response Team. That's known as the CERT team. And they work on disaster preparation, fire safety, search and rescue, medical operations. And tonight, we have a couple graduates from the CERT program, the spring and fall graduates. And we wanna recognize them. And Graham, if you'd tell us a little bit more about the program and introduce the graduates. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Adam and members of the city council. The City of Thousand Oaks has a strong public safety partnership with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department and the Ventura County Fire Department. In past years, Thousand Oaks and Ventura County have experienced several emergency incidents, some more tragic than others. However, with each incident, we've become stronger, more effective, in both our response and our recovery. A major component of a prepared community is a resident's ability to be self-sufficient, prepared, and trained. And over the past 10 years, several hundred residents have completed the six-year free Thousand Oaks CERT program. The objective of the CERT program is for residents 18 years and older to learn and share the fundamentals of individual and neighborhood preparedness. The popularity of this program continues to grow, with a waiting list already in place for next year's two classes. Residents interested in participating in the program can do so by viewing the city's website for next year's classes and signing up online. This year, in 2019, we had 61 graduates from two classes. And tonight, we have about 17 CERT graduates that are here tonight to be recognized for their time and dedication to public safety. At this time, if they could all come up to the dais, that would be helpful. And I think Chief Spikerman's gonna join me as well as Ventura County Fire Law Enforcement. And as I read their names, if you could greet our fire chief, that would be very helpful. Excellent. First graduate is Bruce McClintock. Second one is Christine Rabuska. Chuck Pippen. Daniel Tweed. David Milligan. Elizabeth Zernick. Frances Blair. Greg and Judy Benedict. Heidi Lundgren. John and Isella Brooks. Mary Hoben. Matthew Cava Sitch. Sorry, I gave it a go. Robert Meron. Sharon Patterson. And Catherine Patterson. Please join me in congratulating our 2019 CERT graduates. Chief?
I think they're probably gonna want a picture, right?
Yeah, let's...
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. My own day.
This is a very important set of people here, because priority in Thousand Oaks is keeping people safe, and you helped do that. So, thank you very much. How about we get a picture with the rest of the council?
You must squeeze much tighter. Much, much tighter. One more.
Madam City Clerk, if you would announce the public comment period, please.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearings. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Nine individuals have presented cards in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, if you would please state your name and city of residence, I would appreciate it. The first up is Kristi Rannick. Hi, Kristi.
Hi, my name is Kristi Rannick, and I live in Moore Park. But I am here on behalf of Thousand Oaks High School. Good evening, Mayor Adams, members of the city council, and Thousand Oaks city staff. My name is Kristi Rannick, and I serve as the Assistant Principal of Student Activities at Thousand Oaks High School. I am here representing our ASB students and the golf programs at the high school. In my capacity as Assistant Principal, I oversee a number of student groups on campus, including dance teams, spirit cheer performing arts, student clubs, and the associated student body leadership class. The ASB class teacher, Ms. Eret, and I work together to help the ASB leadership students plan engaging activities that benefit the entire student body at Thousand Oaks High School. Over the past few years, the students in the ASB leadership class have noticed the sound system in the Lancer Stadium often presents challenges for fans and participants alike. To help improve the overall sound, the ASB students have been hauling the school's portable system back and forth from the ASB classroom to the stadium for various events. Unfortunately, the sound system took a huge hit last spring during the rains, when the school and district discovered our press box was leaking. The leaks have been fixed, but the soundboard and equipment in the building were damaged beyond repair. In addition, the speakers attached to scoreboard were short-circuiting due to age. As you can imagine, this has made it very difficult for groups, including the school's athletic teams and community events, to put on announcing during these events. The ASB students have recognized the importance of working sound system in the stadium at all times, and voted to move forward in applying for a city grant to help fund new equipment. In addition, they have budgeted money from various fundraising endeavors to match the grant and pay for the additional costs of the new microphones and installation. On behalf of the students of ASB, we would like to thank the community grant committee for recommending the council fund our stadium sound project. The students are very excited about the prospects of having new, modern equipment that they won't have to haul back and forth from the classroom. In addition, I would like to read the following statement from Coach Dano and the TOHS golf program. "On behalf of the Thousand Oaks High School Boys and Girls Golf Teams, we offer sincere thanks in reference to the recommendation for the grant. Words cannot express the excitement of the athletes over the creation of an indoor practice facility, and the grant provides us the means to make significant progress towards that goal. As a coaching staff, having the backing of the community cannot be stated enough. Thanks for your generosity. We will be able to improve the overall quality and experience of all of our student athletes, and have the potential to provide the simulator to community groups. Using the simulator will allow the golf athletes to practice on campus, reducing the cost of the golf program incurred by the booster groups. The students work incredibly hard and will continue to make Thousand Oaks High School and our community proud. Again, thank you for the consideration of both of the grants. Thousand Oaks High School truly appreciates the support of our community. Thank you."
Thank you, Kristi. Next up is Kristi Warner, followed by Gary Hartung.
Wait. Good evening, Mayor Adam, members of the council and viewing audience. My name is Aaliyah, and we are the K Kids.
My name is Emma, and I'm a fourth grader at Weathersfield Elementary and a K kid. We are here tonight to let you know that kids like us are making a difference in our
Hi, my name is Sarah. I'm a fourth grader at Weathersfield and a K kid. We helped our community with a food drive at school for Manna, and collected 1,200 pounds of food so our neighbors could eat.
Hi, my name is Luca. I'm a fourth grader at Weathersfield and a K kid. On December 6th, we dropped off 1,110 sand letters for Macy's Make-A-Wish. It was Believe Day, so it was double the donation, that's $2,220, to help grant wishes for sick kids.
Hi, my name is Addison Lester. I am a fifth grader at Weathersfield Elementary, and this is my third year as a K kid. After Hurricane Dorian destroyed the Bahamas and the massive fires hit, I asked Mrs. Warner, our advisor, what we could do to help. We came up with a book drive, where we gave away books. For every $5 donation, shoppers got a bag to take 10 books and received a magnetic bookmark. Together with our K kids... Together with our K-Kids and Mrs. Warner's help, we collected $427.
Hi, my name is Elliot. I'm a fourth grader and a K-Kid. We would like to present Shawna from the American Red Cross with a big check and a real check with $427 to help with the hurricane relief efforts. Thank you, Red Cross, for all you do to help those affected by disasters.
Great job, girls. Wonderful. All right. Gary Hartung is up next, followed by Susan Weiniger.
Hi, Gary. So I'm Gary Hartung. I live in Thousand Oaks. I would like to speak about the Ventura County Transportation Commissions and the Southern California Association of Governments' traffic plan for the next 20 to 25 years, and secondly, about affordable housing. I recently read a report that the Ventura County Transportation Commission and the Southern California Association of Government wants to solve our transportation congestion by adding one or more lanes on the 118, the 23, and the 101 freeway. This is profoundly stupid. They did not once think about providing the tens of thousands of people who are riding on these freeways four and five days a week with buses. You solved—the—we're all—you know, for decades, well, we've got to do something about greenhouse gas emissions, methane, carbon dioxide, and these morons keep encouraging tens of thousands of people to drive, 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 and drive, and drive, instead of putting all these people on buses. Secondly, in regards to the affordable housing problem here, several weeks ago, I talked to a gentleman who works for the home builder who's gonna build—I guess it's apartment homes across the street from the Tarantula Brewing Company. And he told me that only 12 out of the 100 or more units that are going to be built there are going to be, quote, "affordable." These units, at least 80, 85% of them, should be affordable. I believe that the developer, the CEO, is Mr. Rick Caruso. That man is filthy rich, but yet, he's not satisfied. He has to make millions and millions more, but he does not want to provide affordable housing for the average working Joe. This should not be tolerated. Thank you.
All right, Gary. Susan Weiniger, followed by Joy Dupuy.
Hi, I'm Susan Weiniger. I live in Thousand Oaks, and I'm speaking tonight about the city's wireless policy. Regarding small cell wireless applications, something changed on December 5th, and it will affect all new small cell applications. It also will be useful for allowing greater protections for our city's residents since the rulings uses the word "environmental" and "health" words. Aspects of National Small Cell Environmental Review exemptions have been withdrawn, as you have heard. As you also know, in trying to speed up the rollout of small cell deployment, the Federal Communications Commission had previously adopted measures meant to streamline the review and permitting process, often referred to as the shot clock. But in August, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit decided to change features of the FCC order, calling the deregulation of small cells arbitrary and capricious. They now will require environmental review effective December 5th of this month. I know you have been previously advised about this August 9th ruling, and the FCC has abided by the D.C. Court. You were most likely told that this was insignificant and will have no effect on our city, since the ruling was in regard to tribal lands, but the wording also included "and others." That part is agreed to by the FCC and has been deemed to be part of the national rollout for small cell facilities, having far-reaching effects on our own application process since it requires environmental analysis in our city also. It will have an effect on the shot clocks, giving us more time. This allows the city to once again notify local residents, hold hearings, analyze environmental impacts, and buy time, which is critical in protecting our residents. Please do not ignore or discount the potential of this new court order and FCC rule. If you discount the implications of this ruling, you are doing your residents a disservice. Please change the ordinance to comply. Thank you very much, and I am going to turn in a copy of the court ruling.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Next up, Joy Dupuy, followed by Peggy Rosenberg. Hi, Joy.
Good evening, city council members.
Yeah, I should remind the speakers, it's my mistake. Please state your name and residence, if you would.
Joy Dupuy, Thousand Oaks. I wanted to open with a question on the issue of small cell site development. Does Thousand Oaks want to be part of the problem or part of the solution? I dare say it wants to be part of the solution. Our city is nestled against the Santa Monica Mountains and prides itself on its designated open space, which is 1/3 of the total city. We are proud of the 50,000 to 60,000 protected oak trees for which our city is named for. I know we all love our city and want to maintain its special qualities. The FCC has had to roll back some of its regulations thanks to some recent happenings. The first was on August 8th, and it was at the D.C. Court of Appeals, the second highest court in the land. It ruled that the FCC's placement of small cell site review deregulation was arbitrary and capricious. And on November 5th, the court stated that all small cell applications now have to undergo environmental impact studies, including the health of the residents through NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. I looked up the League of California Cities online, and under legal powers and obligations, it was written, "Power to regulate, to further the public's health, safety, convenience, and general prosperity. The limitations are preempted by state and federal law. You now have the policing power as per federal law, and I am eager to see the changes that can be made in the hands of our very competent local government. I ask you, is this possibly affecting the quality of the human environment? If our eyes could see Wi-Fi, this here, which I'm going to pass around, is a rendering of what it may look like, and it's the Wi-Fi just going all over the place on the photo. Does this, quote, "encourage productive and enjoyable harmony between man and his environment," as stated in NEPA? In its decision, the court pointed to the FCC's expectations for the number of small cell deployments, and given the scale, it's, quote, "impossible." On this record, to credit the claim that small cell deregulation will leave little to—will leave little to note—it never mind, I'm sorry, I have a really bad cold. I am hopeful that the environmental effects of small cell sites will be inserted into the Thousand Oaks ordinance as soon as possible. I, for one, see some light at the end of the tunnel, and am excited that corporate lobbyists and spinners who promote unregulated application of small cell sites will now have to cede control to local governments. Thanks very much, and I'll pass this around.
Thank you, Joy. Next up, Peggy Rosenberg, followed by Madeline Altman.
Peggy Rosenberg, a 28-year member of the community of Thousand Oaks. Good evening, city council members. Thank you for letting me address you again. As you know, we have been coming to these meetings since March. We've been telling you what has been happening as things began to unravel, and we haven't been proven wrong yet. Unfortunately, nothing has happened on your end, and here we are tonight, not to ask to be put on the agenda, since that has not happened in 10 months. Instead, we simply ask you to abide by the laws. Every time we come before you, we are told that your hands are tied. When we came in August, you told us that the D.C. Court of Appeals, the second highest court in the land, ruled in our favor. It struck down the large part of the FCC regulations, telling the FCC that its deployment of small cell facilities was arbitrary and capricious. We were also pointing out to you that the FCC Commissioner herself, Jessica Rosenwarsel, tweeted that day that the FCC needed to do better. I am submitting both the court ruling and her tweet for public records. Still, this council took no corrective action. Finally, on November 5th, the FCC posted in the Federal Register, which is the official journal of the federal government of the United States that contains government agency rules, proposed rules, and public notices, that it is going to abide by the D.C. Court of Appeals' ruling and change its regulations. The FCC agreed that from December 5th forward, all small cell applications need to have an NEPA review before the application is approved. Mr. Kramer was asked directly by one of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commissioners in November if anything regarding cell facility applications had changed, to which he categorically stated, "No, nothing." We have that on camera, if you would like to see the evidence. We can no longer be relying on a resource who, although highly esteemed by your city staff, is not up to date on his information at best. Mr. Kramer represents 40 cities. His law firm surely does not have the capacity to pay off all the liabilities that will have to be paid for illegal rendering of small cell facilities. We can no longer rely on old news. Things were changing daily, and we updated you of those changes. I stand here before you today to tell you that the FCC itself has changed its regulations. We now need to go back to the ordinance and change it to include NEPA reviews. This automatically nullifies the shot clock. If the city doesn't want to be held liable for breaking the federal regulations, the ordinance now needs to reflect the new FCC rulings. I am submitting that for the public registry. Please start listening to your residents. We obviously take this issue more seriously than your consultants do.
Peggy, your time is up. Thank you.
One sentence?
One.
Yes. We don't want our city bankrupt, and we certainly are open to any type of discussion. With three minutes, we don't have the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Altman, followed by Tracy Thomas. Hi, Madeline.
Hi, good evening. Welcome, and thank you for being here, Mayor and City Council. We really appreciate you being here. This has probably been—I would think probably—the largest topic outside of your normal topics that have come in this year.
And your city of residence is?
I am in Newberry Park.
Thank you.
Dr. Madeline Altman. I'm a chiropractor. I'm also licensed in x-ray supervisor operator, and I'm also trained in laser. I've trained with a lot of different types of energy and different types of radio waves, and this is a microwave, which we know should not have any metal. I get concerned because there's a lot of metal in people's bodies, and that's going to be reacting to this microwave. Anyway, all these things react in people, and it either helps them positively or negatively with these types of energies. The city is responsible, to some extent, for their people's well-being, and there are over 3,800 peer-reviewed studies proving over 1/3 of the people will be very sick from radiation. In 2019, there are three major lawsuits and rulings that are in the favor of your residents, your constituents, who ask you to make the remedy for any past overreach. According to the Telecommunication Acts, you have authority to determine the operations of the towers or cell facilities, from the hours it runs to the locations and the strength that it emits. On April 4th, 2019, the California Supreme Court decision, T-Mobile versus San Francisco, decision affirms the authority of the policing powers of the local governments per the California constituents to regulate utilities. This is an important decision that goes beyond just the aesthetics. Let's see, in August 19, the U.S. Court of Appeals and D.C. Circuit remanded part of a Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, order has allowed the wireless carriers to deploy 5G or small cell towers without undergoing environmental or historic reviews. They reprimanded that. In October 19, the Mozilla Corporation—which I'm going to leave you this lawsuit here to review—ruled against the FCC's attempt to block all local-level laws that regulate the Internet, enabling the state to pass net neutrality litigation. On matters of limiting the state for local levels of enforcement of net neutrality, the court ruled the FCC has overstepped its bounds and reversed that part of the rule. This was one of our concerns at the beginning of this year. Let's see. So I'm hoping that you all take all these into consideration, and thank you for listening to all of us. I appreciate it. It means a lot.
Thank you, Madeline. Tracy Thomas, followed by Mandy Jacob.
My name is Tracy Thomas, and I live in Thousand Oaks. Hi, city council, members, city attorney, and city manager. We are living in such exciting times, and I have been watching the FCC roll back its encompassing rules and make way for local government to take more control, our local government to take more control and thought than it never had before. So I am excited here to see how the city attorney will incorporate the FCC's new regulation into its ordinance that we have been asking to be changed for well over 3/4 of the year now. Can you tell us when you will take into account the environmental effects into your ordinance? Regulations 1312, part of the United States Code 47, has been dropped, and all the definitions have now been included in Section 1311. You have the policing power as per federal law and now federal regulation over any cell facility that is less than 50 feet. This problem is not going away, and in fact, our city now finds itself in direct violation of published federal regulations. We ask that you please fix this problem, and we are waiting to engage with you to find more peace around this matter. I have a 13-year-old son who is affected by this, and it's really hard when you see people don't even acknowledge you in front of you. So I'm a resident here, and at this point, what I've seen go up from Patterson Park all upside the freeways, there's a part of me I really want to leave here, because I moved here to find peace, to find safety, for my kid to grow up somewhere with a natural cause of feeling protected. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mandy Jacob from Newberry Park. Thanks for listening to us. We have been coming for ages, and I just wanted to tell you about our organization, California Issues Reform. We've been really busy looking after the interests of people like that. Unfortunately, you know, we've grown to thousands of members now, and really, not many people will come because the Wi-Fi is very strong in here, the EMFs are very strong, so we are representing a lot of people. But besides the city of Thousand Oaks, we're representing a lot of cities, and we've been going up and down the state, talking with different city councils, city attorneys, and lawyers, and lots of them have already started changing the ordinance based on the new FCC regulations. I'm not sure how much gets spoken to between the manager, the attorneys, but as far as we have eight to nine ADA accommodation requests that have been submitted to the city, and we have 70 registered, so there are another 60 to come. We also have obviously given you a cease and desist based on the— based on the information that we had. And we took your advice. You told us to go to the federal level, and so that's what we've been doing. And we've had two fantastic contacts that we've made. The first was with the intervenors themselves on the August 9 lawsuit that has been given there. And what they said was, we asked them directly. I've transcribed all the information. Does this lawsuit apply specifically to Native Americans? And they said, not only are there no longer exemptions for small cell facilities, but their ruling is applied not only to the District of Columbia or native lands. So this is a national ruling. And our most exciting contact is that we are now in touch directly with the senior counsel of the FCC in the WTB Department. And we're pleased to say that everything we've been telling you since August and since April is correct. I have also, again, because I'm not allowed to misquote him, I wanted to let you know that we asked him if the ordinances need to be changed, and he said if the ordinance is not changed, you are in direct federal against the direct federal regulations. So our first question, does this apply to American land? The senior counsel's response, the D.C. Circuit Court in the United Kewa Band of Cherokee Indians versus FCC vacated the portions of the commission's order that exempted certain wireless facilities and federal environmental review. In vacating portions of the report 18-30, the court determined that the small wireless facilities are not exempt and must therefore be reviewed by NEPA. Under the commission's procedure, if any action affects the environment, applicants must do an environmental assessment. The proposal will have significant environmental impact on the human environment. And this is what's so beautiful, because he even gave us his direct email that residents can now apply for any kind of application that has not a cell application, that has not done a NEPA facility.
Your time is up, Mandy.
Okay. All I ask is, we consult all over the state, and we'd love to, we've been emailing, we try, we would just love to get involved in some kind of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comments. I'd like our city manager to follow up, if you please.
Thank you so much, Mayor Adam. Just really quickly, right out of the gate, a question about 299 Thousand Oaks Boulevard. That's the development that will be forthcoming across from the Tranche Hill Brewing Company. A developer on that project is not Caruso-affiliated. Just wanted to make sure I corrected that. In addition, it's important for the council and the public to know, while there will be 12 very low and low affordable units within that project, the developer in that case also provided $1.25 million to a fund that will likely go towards affordable housing. As it relates to FCC and small cell, the city remains in complete compliance with the federal law that binds every city in America. Our attorneys and experts, of which Mr. Kramer is one of the nation's foremost, are well aware of the various cases working their way through the courts. To date, nothing has changed that would necessitate a change to our ordinance. We are responsible for abiding by federal law, as is every other city. I'm glad to hear that the group is having success in talking with the FCC, and I encourage everyone that is interested to channel your concerns to that proper forum, which is the federal government and the FCC. The next major hearing is actually coming up in Pasadena. For those that may not know this, this hearing will be held on February 10, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. In regards to a question about ADA and accommodations, reasonable accommodations have been provided to anyone that has raised an issue. They have not chosen to take those reasonable accommodation measures. That's all my updates.
Good follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Powers. I believe Mayor Protem, Bill de la Peña, has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Adam. I just wanted to mention to the audience here this evening that the FCC, and I'm quoting, "very quietly just released a major order," excuse me, "a major order regarding radio frequency admission safety." After many years of study, the FCC has elected to keep its legacy RFEME standards in place. In other words, they're not changing anything regarding RFs, which we have been urging them to take a look at. And that is an order that was released about five days ago, and we are in the process of having that analyzed.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right. Shall we move on to the consent calendar? Any items to be pulled? If not, may I get a motion for that, please?
I'll move the consent calendar.
All right, thank you. Let's take that to a vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0, and I have two ordinance titles to read into the record. An ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 1-10.13 of Title 1, Chapter 10 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code regarding future employment restrictions for former officers or employees for one year following termination of officer or employee, Ordinance Number 1668-N.S., and an ordinance to repeal Chapters 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, 16, and 17 of Title 8, and to amend Chapters 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, 16, 17 to Title 8 of the Municipal Code to adopt by reference the Title 24, 2019 California Code of Regulations, including the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Building Code, California Fire Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Electric Code, California Energy Code, and California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, and International Property Maintenance Code, MCA 2019-70485, and that's Ordinance Number 1669-N.S.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, we have a rather lengthy agenda this evening, so we're going to move a couple of issues around in deference to our speakers, and we're going to move up the City Investment Review Committee report and take that right now. And our Finance Director, Jamie Boscarino, is going to deliver that report. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, and City Council members. I'd like to invite Mr. John Short down to the speaker's podium. Mr. Short is the Chair of the City's Investment Review Committee, and he is here tonight to present the committee's annual report. And I'd just like to take a minute to thank Mr. Short and all the committee members for volunteering their time throughout the year to serve on this important committee.
Evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor. John Short, resident of the city of Thousand Oaks, 25 glorious years. The committee was established... Oh, first of all, good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. The committee was established in 1997, and is comprised of five members with experience in the financial investment arena. Current members include myself, Jim Hoagland, Mark Cronkey, and Richard Law. My term, my term, as well as the terms of Richard Law and Mark, will expire in January. There is also a vacancy that was created by Bill Burlinger. It's a resignation. The city appoints, appointments are done in January. The committee was established to monitor the treasurer's compliance with investment policy in the report to city council on a quarterly as well as annual basis. The committee also recommends changes to the investment policy. The committee presented its last annual report to city council December 18, 2018. The committee met its schedule four times during this last year. The city portfolio has increased by 16 basis points from 1.84% to 2% since our last report. That increased yield provided an estimated $500,000 in additional interest income. In 2019, however, the Fed has decreased interest rates three times. Due to the ladder portfolio that we have put together, the city's yield will also follow that trend. The committee's quarterly reviews of investments showed that the investments are in diversified pools of low-risk investments in compliance with the city's policies. The committee submitted a report of its findings to city council after each meeting. Agendas and summary notes are also provided to the council members and are available on the city's website. As we continue to evaluate the portfolio composition, specifically the amounts invested in Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, which are closely tied to the housing market, we recommend that staff attempt to evenly distribute its investments into four primarily governmental-sponsored enterprises: home loan, farm credit, Fannie Mae, as well as Freddie Mac. In addition, the amount invested in U.S. Treasuries has increased from 1.85% last year to 8.1% in September of this year, improving the diversification. The committee is tasked with recommending changes to the investment policy. Staff will present the updated investment policy to council in January. The recommendations made to the committee this year are, number one, increase the maximum investments allowed in super nationals. Number two, replace the rating requirement on negotiable certificates of deposit with the requirement that all negotiable certificates of deposits be insured with the FDIC. Using a pricing service such as Bloomberg to confirm a price on U.S. Treasuries is competitive rather than obtaining three quotes. The recommendation is due to the speed at which the price of Treasuries change, which makes three quotes less effective. Staff will address the committee's recommendations of changes to the investment policy when staff presents the policy to city council this coming January. The recommendation is to receive the file and report. Couple of things I want to share real quick, and then I shall be done. Orange County, 1995. City of Vallejo, 2008. City of Stockton, 2012. Mammoth Lakes, 2012. City of San Bernardino, 2012. What do all these agencies have in common? For starters, they'll file bankruptcy for one reason or another. Mismanagement of funds is a driving factor in these bankruptcies, and they do not have the amazing staff as well as council members that the city of Thousand Oaks does have. We, as a community, are blessed to have talented staff and council members to manage the finances of the city. In the past 10 years, we have been through the worst recession since the Great Depression and have experienced historic lows in interest rates. Both issues create extreme challenges the management of public funds pursuant of these three key principles. Number one, preservation of principal. Number two, liquidity. And number three, yield. To put things in proper perspective, yields in the city's portfolios have decreased 57% since I was appointed in 2007. This is a direction, this is a reflection of the massive cuts in interest rates that occurred since 2009. Yet throughout the trials and tribulations, the city's portfolio has grown by $14 million this past decade. At this point in time, I'd like to open it up for any questions council members may have for the Investment Review Committee.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have questions for John or Jamie? And it doesn't look like we do.
Out mesmerized is the words I'm looking at right now. Councilmember Jones, good evening.
Good evening. Did you want to say something to me?
No, I just say a good evening.
Oh, good evening.
So if having none, I want to do one more thing. I want to wish all of you, staff of the city, and council members, and mayor, a joyful and blessed holiday season, and may 2020 bring you and your families health and prosperity. May God bless each one of you, our city, and may God bless America. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John. Thank you for helping us stay on track, and thank you for your overall community service. Great citizen there. I do have just a comment or two for Jamie. Glad to see that we've increased our treasury participation. I think that's an excellent move. I'd like to see that even go higher. The yields are more competitive now than they've been in some time. The single quote with the treasury bill, or the treasuries, that's fine. It's such a liquid market. I think John has a good point. We search around, the market moves on us, and we may not get the yield that we wanted to originally. So that's perfectly fine. Is there some sort of yield advantage with these super nationals? And the reason we go up to 10% single issue, 20% overall?
They're pretty comparable to agencies, and so we're just looking at it as diversification purposes. I think total agencies were over 50% of our portfolio in agencies. So to be able to provide us more flexibility to diversify, the committee thought it would be appropriate to increase it to 20%.
Well, they certainly are rated well, AAA. That's about as good as it gets. Yeah, we've had a, the city's had a long history of being fiscally conservative. As Will Rogers once said, "I'm not concerned as much about the return on my principal as I am the return of my principal." And we've operated on that presumption for some time. Thank you, Jamie, and thank you, John. Great job. Oh, well, we're going to need a vote to receive and file the report. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Councilmember, pardon me, Mayor Protem, Claudia Bill de la Peña, was first up.
Move approval to receive and file.
Thank you. Take that to a vote, please. There we are.
Mr. Mayor, would you like another Will Rogers quote?
Sure.
He said, "Buy a stock. If it goes up, sell it. If it doesn't go up, don't buy it."
Okay, but that was Rodney Dangerfield in Caddyshack.
Well, he stole from Will Rogers.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Did we vote?
We did, and Mayor, I'd like to state that motion did pass 5-0.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you all for your help on that. And let us now, we're going to move up just a little bit further with Ann Laffianza. Ann is here. Ann is our Community Funding Review Committee Chair, and we're going to take a look at the Sports Facility Endowment Fund and the grants that your group has come up with. Hi, Ann.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Adam and council members. It's nice to see everyone. My name is Ann Laffianza, and as chairwoman, it is my pleasure to be here this evening to present the Community Funding Review Committee's Recommendations for the City's Fiscal Year 2019-2020, Sports Facilities Endowment Funds, or SFEF Grants. The city's SFEF grant program funding is included in the adopted fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. The grant provides $100,000 of funding to support sports and recreation programs of local nonprofit community and school groups. In order to qualify, applicants must be 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organizations located in or primarily serving the Thousand Oaks community. Qualifying programs must provide a benefit for the community they serve and a wide cross-section of Thousand Oaks residents. The application period was open from September 1st to October 10th, and the application was available on the city's website. Email notifications were sent to applicants from the previous two grant cycles. A press release was published, and an ad was run in the Acorn. CVUSD did an email to all booster clubs, and the city utilized social media to notify the community of the grant opportunity. City staff held application workshops on August 28th at CVUSD for booster clubs and athletic directors, and on August 29th to all other interested nonprofit organizations interested in applying for the grant. Seventy-six individuals representing nine organizations, 47 booster clubs, and 12 schools attended. The city received 16 qualified applications with grant requests totaling $96,613.30. CFRC members reviewed and evaluated the applications independently and objectively using predetermined scoring criteria based on the grant application. Applications scores were provided to city staff for tabulation. The individual scores were combined, and recommended awards were determined based on a grant distribution rubric and unanimously confirmed for recommendation to city council at the November 4th CFRC meeting. The CFRC is recommending grant funding for 16 organizations for a total of $89,890.88. These are the 16 organizations being recommended for funding. The represented events meet the criteria for benefiting the community in a wide cross-section of residents. These include sports facility upgrades and equipment purchases. The Community Funding Review Committee recommends that city council award the fiscal year 2019-2020 SFEF grants as presented by the committee with a total award of $89,890.88. This concludes my presentation this evening. An assistant to the city manager, Melissa Hurtado, and associate analyst Francine Spiegel, and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Ann. Questions from the council? Oh, I do have one. Mayor Protem, Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Thank you so much, Ms. Laffianza. It, I believe, is your first proposal for the sports endowment as the newly formed committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And I know there are some growing pains and all that, but I'm so glad that you have chosen to serve on that committee. I really appreciate it. My question is more for staff than it is for you as a chairperson. And as we go through the list, I wanted to see first, I wanted to ask my colleagues if we can break up the grants in terms of vote. I'd like to pull the Conejo YMCA separate from the rest of the recommendations. So with the Conejo Y, I don't see that we have granted the Conejo YMCA any grants in the last five years, and the money has gone to the Southeast YMCA?
Yes, my understanding is that, and I've only been doing this for a year, but my understanding from looking at past records is all of the past grants have gone to the Southeast YMCA, and this is the first one to the Conejo Valley.
Okay.
But all of the past grants in the last five years have, even though the money was to the Southeast YMCA, it was to benefit YMCA's in our local community.
Okay, so the name may be different, but it's still benefiting the same facilities? Okay.
Yes.
And I'm asking my council colleagues to separate the rest of the proposal from the Conejo YMCA, because I'd like to vote on it separately. The reason being that the Conejo Y is the sister of the other Y in Westlake Village, and as we know, the Y in Dos Vientos was sold about a year ago. And what the residents may not know, that taxpayers had spent $1 million on the Y in Dos Vientos. So when the Y was sold about a year ago, they made a profit, and the $1 million taxpayer money did not need to be repaid to the City of Thousand Oaks anymore because the deadline had just passed in October of 2018, shortly before the Y was sold. So, and at the time, the council discussion was, what is happening with the $1 million that have been invested? Is it going to now, from the profit, going to benefit somewhat to the Conejo Y? And so my question is whether staff knows, whether we know if any monies from the proceeds of the sale have benefited the Conejo Y?
I'll take that, because I think I know the answer on behalf of staff, that we're not involved in discussions with them in terms of accounting for those dollars. So we, the answer, quite frankly, is we don't, we don't know. And I'll let Ms. Hurtado add to it. As it relates to the, and I know Mayor Protam, Bill de la Peña knows this, as it relates to the grants that were contemplated by the committee, they were focused primarily just on the applications and the factors that they were considering, no extenuating factors. The reason this is approved by this body, by the council, is the council is allowed to contemplate those.
Certainly. And the committee, I don't expect this committee to have known all of that information, so you're off the hook completely. So, but I know that there was discussion that money from the proceeds of the sale, which I believe it was sold to help pay for the Y in Westlake Village, do we know whether any of the proceeds has benefited Conejo? And the answer is no, we don't, correct?
No, it would have to be a question we would pose to the Y directly.
Okay, and over the last few years also, since the record here that we have seen 2014, the Y, in addition to the $1 million, so one in Dos Vientos, has also received about $50,000 over the last five years, and it's had a wonderful benefit to the community. But this being taxpayer dollars, and knowing that the Y was sold to help pay for the Y in Westlake Village, I want to make sure that we, the council, or I as a council member, knows that money from the proceeds is benefiting the Conejo Y. And while a $10,000 grant may not really be a lot of money in the overall scheme of things, nonetheless, it's tax, taxpayer dollars. So I would not support giving $10,000 to the Conejo Y until and unless I know through audited financial statements or so that at least some money from the proceeds of the sale is benefiting the Conejo Y.
Perhaps what I might suggest, councilmember, or Mayor Protam, is if the council is so inclined to go that direction, what I would suggest is staff communicate with the representatives from the YMCA. We extract that item, hold it on the sidelines, and then bring back that additional information, and then the council could contemplate that as an individual piece of this with that additional information, should the council be so inclined.
So that is the reason why I would like to separate the, all of the proposals. And again, I'm not saying we're not going to give the grant money to them. I'd like to see more of their financial, audited financial statements before doing that, especially because of the proceeds from the sale, for which, in part, the taxpayers of the City of Thousand Oaks paid when it was first opened to the tune of $1 million.
So with that information as to where the proceeds of the sale benefited, you're inclined at this point to have that pulled and to vote?
Put it on hold, to pause it.
Oh, put it on hold? Oh, that's different.
No, I mean, until we see what is coming back.
All right, so that's not going to affect the scheme of things if we pull this one item, correct? And you come back with this with some information?
We can certainly hold it and bring it back to council another day.
All right, is that amenable to everyone? All right, well, then, let's do that very thing, then. We'll pull the Conejo Y grant, and if there's no further questions, I'll call the vote on the rest of it. Oh, Mr. Engler.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Just a quick question, just for clarification. On the ride-on therapeutic grant of $10,000, is that their barn in their current facility off of Green Meadow?
Yes.
I believe that's the barn. It's a barn on CRPD property over at Green Meadow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, if you would prepare the vote, and we will pull the Conejo Y to a further date. Oh, yes, Mr. McCoy.
I have a faulty system this evening, so I can't.
Yeah, I didn't pick you up on my speaker view here.
I would ask Mayor Protam, Bill de la Peña, is the same scrutiny going to be applied to the school board, the school district, when we look at every one of these funds to see how they spend their money as well? Because this is a slippery slope. If we want to really investigate this, then I say if we do it piecemeal or do it wholeheartedly.
The difference, Councilmember McCoy, is that the Y is a nonprofit organization, whereas the school district is a state agency.
But it's still, it's still our funds. We're still accountable for that.
It is still taxpayer dollars. And I feel, I feel that we, it is my responsibility to make sure that, since a million dollars is at stake, and as I said, $10,000 really isn't a lot, but I want to make sure that proceeds from, from the sale will actually benefit the Conejo Y in the City of Thousand Oaks, because it was the City of Thousand Oaks taxpayers that paid for the $1 million initially.
Well, I would prefer to, on a funding issue such as this, to get a 5-0 vote, and if, if the information can be provided that would satisfy your query, then we can hopefully have just that. So I, no, we don't yet, but I'm waiting for one. So, yeah, what the motion would be is to vote on the existing recommendations and exclude the Y for now. Oh, and I have a speaker. Councilmember Bill.
No, actually, I was just going to make the motion, but since you already made it.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you make it, please.
Okay. The motion is to approve the grant proposals minus the Conejo YMCA. And we're going to hold the money until we have more financial information.
All right, thank you very much. If you prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, and in closing, I'd just like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a joyous and blessed New Year.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Ann.
What would we do without our volunteers? Thank you both so much. All right, we're going to get back into order here, and we are going to have a public hearing on the wastewater and water rates. That's Agenda 8A, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to please open that hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding wastewater and water rates and fee adjustments, and municipal code amendment regarding water due dates and delinquency penalties. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and at this time, Mayor, we do not have any public speakers.
All righty. Ms. Johnson, I believe you have the report for us. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Adam, city council members. This discussion is for two public hearings. The first is in regards to water and wastewater rates for the next two years. The second is regarding the administration of water billing and recommended changes to the water disconnection date for delinquent unpaid balances. Joining me on the dais is Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director. So here's a summary of the proposed utility rates for the next two years. There is a 1% increase each year to the wastewater service and a 1% rate increase to the water service. Adding to that amount is a 2% and 3% pass-through rate for our imported water costs. The Utility Financial Plans and Wastewater Cost of Service Study, which provide the framework for these proposed utility rates, were approved this past October. Tonight, we have our public hearing for the next two years of rates, which would go into effect February 13th, 2020, and January 1st of 2021. Moving on to more details regarding wastewater rates. The 1% translates to a 28 cent increase for our residential wastewater customers in 2020 and 30 cents per month in 2021. This chart shows the 2020 proposed increases. At $29.65 per month, the city will still have the second lowest wastewater rate in the county. The next highest would be almost $9 more. Additionally, wastewater connection fees are adjusted annually to reflect changes in construction costs. This year, a 0.1% increase, which is $9 for a residential connection, is proposed. Connection fees mitigate the financial impact of development on our existing customers, and these one-time fees apply only to new construction. Moving on to water. So water rates are composed of two different components. There's a base rate that is charged regardless of water use, and a variable rate that depends on quantity used. The base rate is determined by the size of the meter. A 5'8" meter is predominant for our single-family residential customers, and their base rate would increase by 26 cents per month, or the 1% increase. This chart shows how the overall tiered water rates for a single-family residential customer would be affected. The amounts you see here include Cuyegus Municipal Water District, our imported water suppliers, rate increases. So when you put it all together, you get the image you see here. This illustrates how low, moderate, and high-usage bills would be financially impacted. An average residential customer using 13 units per month and with a 5'8" meter would be minimally impacted at a cost increase of just over $2 per month. The city's average monthly bill would still compare favorably with other water providers in our area. For an average residential customer, there would be no change to our rank. It is important to note that agencies with lower water costs reflect differences in local water supply, such as groundwater, which is much less expensive than imported water. Looking at development connection fees, which are new connections to the water system, similar to wastewater, the water connection fees are adjusted annually to reflect changes in construction costs, and a 0.1% increase equating to a $9 residential adjustment is These proposed rate adjustments were prepared under careful consideration by Raftellis Financial Consultants. Their duty was to develop rates which were fair, equitable, financially responsible, and directly attributable to the actual cost of providing these services. I wanted to take the opportunity to provide a brief update on our Utilities Assistance Program. Just over two years ago, city council approved the development of a residential assistance program for low-income water and wastewater customers. Staff performed outreach via brochures, billing inserts, and information provided on the city website. We are currently at 58% capacity for wastewater and 46% capacity for the water program. The program has been well-received, and we have room for more customers who meet the eligibility criteria to receive this assistance. No changes to this program are recommended at this time. The second public hearing tonight is to adopt proposed changes to the municipal code regarding water utility billing and payment due dates. Just over two months ago, Senate Bill 998 was enacted and declared that the number of Californians who lose access to water service due to an inability to pay shall be minimized. While the city's administrative process for utility billing services already closely align with the bill's requirements, it does prohibit a community water system from discontinuing residential service due to non-payment until a payment by a customer has been delinquent for at least 60 days. Current process allows for disconnection at 40 days or more from the initial billing date. The changes to our code and administrative process will adjust that date and allow us to meet the requirements of SB 998. Our recommendations are included here and in the staff report. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And do we have any questions? Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Actually, I don't have any questions. I was ready to, to, oh, never mind, it's a public hearing, so we have to hear.
No, we're not quite there yet.
No, but all I want to say is I regret that I'm not a customer of the City of Thousand Oaks, because the City of Thousand Oaks consistently has the lowest water rates and connection fees. So anyhow, that's it.
Oh, nicely put. All righty.
Mr. Mayor, I don't.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
Yeah, I agree with the comments of Mayor Protam. I just wonder, these connection fees for water and wastewater, do we have any provision if it's a eulogic organization, if it's a charitable group? Do we have any provision to waive either of those fees?
Mr. Spurgeon.
Yeah, I'll take that. I'll take that question. Councilmember Jones, the water enterprise, because it's an enterprise and pursuant to state law, the fees cannot be waived unless they're backfilled. And in past, some, some past projects that included a nonprofit, there was a council decision to, to backfill with general fund connection fees. So that, that's something that has been done, but in general sense, only the council can waive those fees.
So if we want to waive either fee for a charitable organization, we would have to pay it for them, is that, is that what I understand?
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Just a quick question for myself. Could, for the benefit of the public, can you explain why we always have the lowest wastewater rates, incredibly low versus the other cities? Is it, has it got to do with Hill Canyon?
Well, Hill Canyon Treatment Plant makes up just a little less than half of the wastewater, total wastewater budget. So it's significant, but it's, but it's about half, and then the rest of the collection system makes up the rest of those costs for operations and maintenance. I would say that this, the answer to that goes back probably decades in terms of city leadership, the city council and, and managers making wise choices to increase rates ahead of capital expenditures to provide a, a healthy capital fund, so that when we had major renovations and expansions, for instance, at our wastewater treatment plant, a large portion of that funding was there, and so it didn't have to be paid with large rate increases. And that's what we've seen elsewhere in, in the county and, and other agencies, unfortunately.
Would you say it was because of the wisdom of the council 50 years ago?
Oh, you might know something about that, Councilmember Johnson.
I think, Mr. Cora, I would agree with that. I think, Mr. Corne, I would agree with that.
All right. Very good. No, that's great, because our rate at $29.65 is so incredibly low to the highest city, which is over $104. That's good. Very good. And the other thing I just, Ms. Johnson pointed out, that a lot of cities are able to rely on groundwater, and we are not. We're 100% imported from Metropolitan Water District. However, that may be changing, because as we've discussed before, we're hoping that some of the wells at the golf course can give us up to 10% of our water supply. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Well, we're looking forward to that. All righty. Now we will open it to public testimony. Do we have any public testimony? And we do not. So any staff response to the input or the lack of input? Never mind. We have no public testimony, so there's probably no input. So let us go to... Any further questions from the council? Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm with Councilmember Bill de Le Peña that I wish I were as in the city's water service. It's remarkable that we have increased our fee by only 1% per year. That's remarkable. Is there anything else we can do, the pass-throughs, or something that we simply are going to have to absorb? Is that correct? And pass along to our consumers? Is there anything other than what the mayor mentioned in going for the well that we're digging? Is there anything else that we can do to help moderate those increases?
That's a really good question, Councilmember, because in many ways, we are at the mercy of the imported agencies, not just our local Ventura County wholesale agency, which is Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, but also the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. And I would say that there has been a moderation of those increases in more recent years than as compared to history, where there's been much higher and more sporadic increases in the imported water rates. I think that that is in part due to the influence and comments by even our own agency in the past, where we have gone and testified in front of, say, Metropolitan Water District with concerns about these rates and how we, at the end of the pipe, so to speak, have to pass those through, and our ratepayers have to kind of buck up and deal with that. So over time, I think, certainly I've seen a moderation of those, but I think we're going to see that same level of increase in imported water rates going forward for the foreseeable future because of the huge infrastructure capital expenses that they face with such a large water system, as well as dealing with other things like the challenges in the Delta and what might be needed there to help provide reliable water supply.
All right. Very good. Thank you both. And your wisdom is noted, Councilmember Jones. That's in the record now.
Thank you. Did you... What, a motion for both ordinances or just one at a time?
Not quite yet. We need to... First of all, I have to see if there are any last call for written protests, and I don't see any, do I? Then there are no further written protests, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would ask our city clerk to please provide results of the tabulation.
The results are as follows. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed water rate increase was 15,352. A total of three valid protests were received. Based on the results, there were insufficient protests received for a majority protest. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed wastewater rate increase was 35,199. A total of nine valid protests were received. Based on the results, there were insufficient protests received for a majority protest.
All right. Thank you. If there is no further discussion, may I get a motion, please?
Well, I'll move both ordinances. Do I move they be read in title only, further reading be waived, and they be adopted? Is that the correct motion?
One through four, staff recommendations.
I'll move one through four, staff recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. And if you would bring us to a vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0 in your ordinance titles. Ordinance adjusting setting rates, fees, and discharge limits of the City Wastewater Division uncodified; and ordinance adjusting and setting rates and fees of the City Water Division uncodified; and an ordinance amending sections 10-2.902 and 10-2.909 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code of the City of Thousand Oaks regarding administrative principles governing the city's water system.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right. We're going to move on to another public hearing, and we're going to combine two issues here, B and C, and that will be the... We're going to talk about the cannabis testing facility and the cannabis operations update. And Mr. Heer, I believe you're going to give us his report.
Mayor, if I can...
Oh, you have to open the hearing.
Yes. So hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B and C regarding selection of cannabis testing facility and cannabis operations update. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Five individuals have presented speaker cards pursuant to council standards. Each speaker will have five minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Heer, if you please.
Thank Mayor Adam, and good evening, Mayor Adam and councilmembers. Tonight, we are here to talk about four items on cannabis. And with me tonight on the dais is Community Development Director Mark Towne, CDD Operations Manager Marjan Bazadi, and HDL Consultant Matthew Eaton. So the four items for consideration tonight include the testing laboratory selection, an amendment to the cannabis ordinance, the legendary site location at 1339 Lawrence Drive, and we have a request from Leaf Dispensary to open at a different location. They will not be opening a medical cannabis facility at 2400 Willow Lane. We're going to take each of these items one at a time, and at the end, we're going to outline them again for any motion or decision you want to make. So the first item we have on cannabis is related to the testing laboratory. It has its own separate staff report. But when the application process was approved, we went out and received three applications for the testing laboratory. These applications were reviewed and analyzed by both staff and HDL, our HDL consultants. Two of the three applicants proceeded to phase three, and interviews were conducted. Based on the scoring, Atlas Quality Assurance Lab, or Atlas QAL, received the highest score for consideration for you tonight. Based upon our practice, we are bringing this final fourth phase to you for your approval of Atlas QAL to open a testing laboratory at 3563 Old Conejo Road. And again, Mr. Eaton is here to answer questions regarding that. When we did this analysis for the testing facility, the team looked at various factors. And when it came to the end of the scoring, Atlas QAL received the highest score of 89% of the maximum points available. This score reflects a number of evaluations, including the interview, but also categories such as their location, business plan, security, and safety plan. I also want to point out that a score between 82% and 87% is considered a solid passing score. The second applicant, number two, is 5HT, and they actually received a score of 85%. Again, 5HT analytics, 85%, is in the middle of a passing grade. Again, with the final score, we are requesting that at the end of this hearing, staff approve Atlas QAL for the testing laboratory. The second item in front of you tonight is regarding ordinance amendments to our cannabis ordinance in 529.01 et al. In our September 10, 2019 meeting, council directed staff to amend cannabis ordinance as follows. The city will not permit two medical cannabis retail operators to conduct business in Thousand Oaks, and will also permit each of them to deliver medicinal cannabis from their respective facilities. There was also an amendment to remove the 24-hour appointments before meeting with customers and expanded the... And also, we received direction to expand the permitted operating hours. So as we discussed, we have two medical cannabis retail facilities now in this amendment. The initial ordinance did not even allow cannabis dispensaries. I do want to point out that in May 2019, the Bureau of Cannabis Control started to allow deliveries from outside retailers for both recreational and medicinal cannabis anywhere across state, within the state. So again, council's direction was to amend the ordinance to allow deliveries into the city by outside retailers, and so therefore, staff is recommending the two retailers also be permitted to deliver medicinal cannabis. As I said earlier, the amendments also indicate eliminate the 24-hour advance appointment requirement, increase operating hours from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The previous hours were from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I also want to draw your attention to the supplemental packet. There was a copy of the amended sections of this cannabis ordinance with a corrected version of section 529.24. In this latest presentation, staff discovered that a portion of the language previously adopted by council on April 24, 2018, was not included in the presentation earlier this year. So the packet contains the complete corrected language for section 529.24. While this council adopted some of the amended changes in 2018 and earlier in 2019, the supplemental accurately reflects the action council took in the last two years. And with the first item, at the end of the presentation, staff will summarize the various motions requested for you tonight. All right. So we have the third item tonight is the new location for Legendary Organics. Again, in September of this year, we presented various items on cannabis, and the direction from this council was to evaluate Legendary Organics' request to move to 1339 Lawrence Drive. So staff, pursuant to our policy and procedures, had HDL consultant review the location, confirmed it was in compliance with our regulations. Staff also met with Legendary Organics owners at the location with the chief of police, and we did that to, one, look at the location, see how they were going to modify it, and it does need a lot of modification. It needs a lot of tenant improvements. And also, look at the parking and the security issues. The chief of police did not have any concerns about the location. Again, because we're going to have an operations agreement that's going to mandate they have the security and the various issues that are required in our operations agreement. We also, pursuant to our requirements, had a community meeting or a neighborhood meeting, and this was a meeting that's notified... So property owners within 600 feet of this location were notified in writing to, that we were going to have this meeting. And the meeting was held on October 29, 2019. We had one person who actually appeared at the meeting, and he expressed his concerns. Mainly, it was frankly about cannabis and the concerns for the youth becoming addicted to cannabis or other drugs, and we had a discussion about that. After that meeting was concluded, and the owners of Legendary had left the meeting, I was walking back to my office, and I actually ran into a gentleman who also was looking for the meeting. He didn't miss the meeting. It was, had already been completed. But we did discuss his concerns about the location. I informed him about tonight's meeting, and he expressed concerns mainly about, that was voiced to me at least, traffic and traffic impacts and parking concerns. Finally, yesterday, I received a telephone call from an administrator of a school approximately 800 feet away from this location. He expressed concerns about this facility and, again, was concerned about the closeness to the school. I reminded him that our ordinance is very specific. We, this is something the council adopted a couple of years ago now, where we do look at sensitive uses, which would include schools K through 12, and, for example, state licensed daycare centers. And the number that we look at is 600 feet from the source. We do not have any sensitive uses within 600 feet of this proposed location at 1339 Lawrence Drive. I will also remind council that through its decisions over the couple, last couple of years, these facilities can only go in the M1 zone. So we do have very limited areas where these facilities can go. And as you may recall, we ultimately amended our ordinance to, again, make sure that we could have that 600-foot radius, but that it would be, if, for example, there was a freeway interrupting the distance, we would be, that would be something that we would approve, that would be okay. And again, we did that certainly because we were concerned that there were not going to be enough viable applicants due to the difficulty of finding locations in the M1 zone. So finally, staff is asking council to authorize the city manager, or his designee in this case, to execute an operations agreement with terms that are consistent with the city regulations if they approve Legendary Organics for the Lawrence Drive address. The final item in front of you tonight is for direction. Shortly after the September 10, 2019 meeting, in which you gave direction for staff to begin processing both Leaf Dispensary at their location, proposed location at 2400 Willow Lane, and Legendary Organics' location, we received contact from the owners of Leaf Dispensary to inform us that they were not going to be able to enter into a lease on the Willow Lane address. Leaf is now requesting to get certification for a new location at 2360 Townsgate Road. Please note that previously, Leaf has given, gave us two addresses to consider, with the second one being at 265 Sunset Road. Subsequent to printing of this packet, Leaf informed staff that the 265 Sunset location is no longer an option. The owners of Leaf may be present to explain the inability to lease on Willow Lane and the loss of the option to go to 265 Sunset Road. If authorized to proceed, staff will certify the location at 2360 Townsgate Road to ensure proper zoning, proper buffer from sensitive uses. Following certification, the consultant at HDL will evaluate the new site. A neighborhood meeting or community meeting will take place, and staff will bring a recommendation back to council, similar to what was done tonight with Legendary Organics. So in conclusion, staff is requesting to act on four items. The testing lab candidate, amendments to the ordinance, approval of Legendary, the Legendary site with direction to allow the city manager to complete the operations agreement after negotiations have been finalized, and to give direction to staff on the new site location analysis for Leaf, and bring back to council for approval consistent with the approved process. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. You have been the point person on this issue. It's very complicated. Appreciate your work on it. Let me open the floor for questions of staff. Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. The location for Legendary, it's beyond the 600-foot range, is that right, from the, from the little school that's there?
Right. So we look at the sensitive uses. In our ordinance, it includes K through 12 schools. It actually includes residential. It includes things such as daycares and other things, maybe like a boys' and girls' club. Those are the types of uses that the state considers as sensitive. Those are the types of uses that the state considers as sensitive. Also, our 600-foot buffer for sensitive uses is consistent with the state's regulations on that same thing. So we did follow the state process as far as how they look at, how much distance they went from the buffer for sensitive uses.
Thank you. Just a follow-up on the, on Leaf's request for the location on, I believe it's Townsgate now?
That is correct.
I believe that there's a church in very close proximity to that location. That's not one of our protected locations, even though perhaps it has children at, at church school, Sunday school and that sort of thing? That doesn't rate?
That's an excellent point. Churches are not in our sensitive use category. However, many churches have either licensed daycares or schools that are involved in the church. It would be something that we would definitely review. And again, we're going to take the 600-foot radius and look at any of the uses there to ensure that they do not qualify for a sensitive use that we would be concerned about. And then we, once we do, that's one of the first items that we look at to ensure that Leaf as an, as a operator and applicant is not going to waste a bunch of money having us go through a whole process just to find out that two months down the line, there is a sensitive use within 100 feet of this location. So we do, that's one of the primary things we do initially, and then from there, we go to the next phase, if you will, and do a little bit more thorough of the building itself, their safety plan, their security plan, the community benefits, those things.
So you're asking us tonight to give you, give you the go-ahead to at least go there and check that location out for Leaf and see if it's something that would work?
That is correct. And, and again, they explained why they couldn't enter into a lease. They were, I will just express to you that they expressed to me that they were blindsided, was the word that they used, and I expressed that we were also blindsided because they came back pretty quick to us and we worked really hard to get them onto Willow Lane. So again, it goes back to the federal law versus the state law, and a lot of times when you're doing leases, there is a concern that when you have financing involved, a owner of a property that might be leasing to a, again, under federal law, illegal use might not get the financing or the rate that they're looking for, and so I think that was part of the decision that the owner had in not leasing to Leaf at that location.
Thank you, Mr. Heher.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have questions regarding locations. We went through more than a year of spending valuable staff time, spending tens of thousands of dollars in staff time in coming up with this particular ordinance, which is the reason why, at least I personally felt very frustrated with the non-progress made by our two applicants. So when we decided for the second license to be issued, I expected and assumed after having met with you as well, that all of your ducks were in a row, and that is not the case. So my question is, I personally would have preferred the Sunset location, but that is now off the table, and I'm wondering, do you have your ducks in a row with that other location on Townsgate?
We do, and we also produce letters.
Wait a minute, well. We, we'll have Mr. Burns as a speaker, actually.
Oh, you are a speaker. I will ask you the question then, when you, when it is your turn. Then my question to staff is, Mr. Heher, is in selecting the testing facility, did that particular applicant or the applicants, did they go through a similar rigorous vetting as our two applicants for this, for the license, Organics and Legendary Organics and, and Leaf?
Mayor Protem, Matthew Eaton with HDL. They did, in fact, go through the same exact rigorous multi-phase competitive testing that your other applicants went through.
Do we expect any sort of similar hiccups with a testing facility application as we encountered with a medicinal dispensary?
As far as the license and the operation, everything is fine and there is no perceived problems. We don't know what problems may occur with a lease in, in the future. We would not know that.
So the address that I see on here tonight, which is 53, I mean 3563 Old Conejo Road, is that the proposed location, or is that the current location, or?
That is the proposed location.
That is the proposed location, and is the applicant here this evening too? They are? Okay, then I will ask them the question about having their ducks in a row as well. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the, of the laboratory, the testing laboratory, can you give me a good feel for the type of impact it would have in that, that particular neighborhood? It's a, a testing facility. Can you give me an idea how mu, how much traffic there'll be there, the visitors, types of employment? Are we talking a lot of people there? What are we talking?
If I may, as staff's answering that question, you know, we do have, because this issue has spanned quite some time, we have two new council members on the council from the original council that made the decision to advance a testing facility. For the benefit of the public and the council, if you remember, we did initiate a process originally for a testing facility and received no applicants at that time. And so we put that on pause in an effort to let the market build, and that clearly worked as we received very competitive applications this time. So I might ask our consultant and Mr. Heher to just speak to the difference in sort of use and a dispensary-type use and a testing facility-type use in terms of the reduction in impact.
Sure, I'm going to start, and then I'm going to have Matthew follow up on his expertise. One of the important things about the laboratories is that these are going to be the scientists who are going to test cannabis that are being used across from all kinds of sources, from all kinds of retail operators, to ensure that it's the product that, that they say it is, that there's no contaminants. It's, they're going to be delivering through a track and trace system, a state approves track and trace system, very small amounts. So these testing laboratories are going to take these small amounts, bring them back to the laboratory and test them. So we have, these are the high-paying jobs of the scientists who do these aspects, and again, they're really not touching the cannabis product. It is actually more of a, the actual sample that they're taking from each location. I will also have Matthew again, talk about this, but we do not have any laboratories in this region. We have 29 laboratories that have been approved and licensed in California as a whole, approximately 16 are in Southern California, and of those 16, we do not have any really for this region itself. The other aspect of this that's, that's important to note is if you have a, if you're operating a testing laboratory, you cannot have any other connections with any other, other types of licenses under cannabis. So for example, you can't own a distribution center, you can't own a retail facility, you can't own a cannabis, a medical cannabis facility. All of those are against the rules because you had to be objective in your testing for the laboratory. So if you're a laboratory owner, you're not going to be involved in any other aspects. Recently, they changed it all for the other licenses, of course, and now owner can own multiple types of uses because they can own a, a cultivation location, for example, and possibly a distribution center, and of course, a retail store. Mr. Eaton?
You did a very good job. The, the testing facilities are solely responsible for doing the quality assurance for all of the licensed facilities within the state. Currently, there are approximately 6,963 licensed businesses within the regulated model throughout the state. That would include manufacturing, retail, distribution, cultivation. As stated, there are only 29 licensed facilities right now, and only 16 in counties south of Santa Barbara. These testing facilities have, will have a high volume. They're responsible for the quality assurance of all the products grown and manufactured in the industry that ultimately hit the retail and go to market. The testing is for heavy metals, potencies, contaminants, molds, mildews, homogeneity. It will run the gamut, and the laboratories, as stated, will be ran by laboratory professionals, and laboratories must be certified. The testing items are small, very small portions that are tested, and then a certificate analysis would be issued for that product, and that certificate analysis follows that product all the way through the purchase at retail.
Just a quick follow-up. The, the testing facility, is it state-driven or is it industry-driven? How, how does that work? Regulations from the state or more, more in terms of self-regulation by the industry?
No, it's completely licensed. It's, it's required to be dual-licensed, both at city and state level, and it is part of the regulatory scheme within the, the state cannabis industry. So it is regulated by the state, the Bureau of Cannabis Control.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Adam. A quick question for, regarding the Leaf location, which is on Townsgate. It is, I believe, within a 600-foot radius, radius of a church and a dance school. Has that, was that looked at?
Again, we frankly informed Leaf that we were not going to make any decision on the application. We weren't going to process any of it. We have not gone through that, that vetting, if you will, until we heard from council tonight. We did not want to take that step unless we thought it was appropriate and had direction from council. So it is something that we will be reviewing. We are aware of the uses around there, and we will ensure and weigh whether or not those, any of those uses trigger the sensitive uses under our code. Again, those sensitive uses have been defined, so we're going to look at those sensitive uses first and then decide if any of them are triggered by the location.
So just to be clear, all you're doing tonight is considering Leaf's request to process a new application at a new address. If you give the okay to that, staff will look at that address and then come back like we are tonight on Legendary and have formal approval of that location. It's not the formal approval of Leaf's location tonight.
So my fear is that if we do that, then, and then they come back and say, look, this location isn't working out after all, we now need to look at yet another location, and this could go for either Leaf or Legendary. This seems like a never-ending process. That's what I'm fearful of.
Indeed, it's, I would echo sentiments that's certainly a frustrating process. Just to put a finer point on what Mr. Heher said, just as we did with Legendary, when they asked to move locations, staff looked and determined if there were any immediately disqualifiable items, meaning look in the GIS system at a cursory level and identify if there is something that is immediately apparent to be disqualifying. There is obviously layers deeper that you can go, and there's additional community outreach that occurs, and that's Mr. Heher mentioned with Legendary. After the council's previous direction, we conducted a public meeting and had, had conversations. The same would occur in the case if you advance the Townsgate location for Leaf this evening. And as items arise, staff will have to make a determination as to whether there are specific concerns to bring it back to the city council. So your assertion is correct that this is fraught, and it is a, it is a real challenge to identify locations, especially within the confines that have been established criteria-wise.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes. Mr. Heher, could you explain to me a little bit about the relationship between the testing facility and the retail facility? Do all of their, the retail products go through a testing? And would the, as far as the routing or whatever of this, would, would they, all of the product that is in a dispensary or a retail facility first go through testing? Or do they sample certain batches?
So it's going to be a, a sample of batches from each location. Again, this is regulated by the state, and one of the reasons why they're doing this is to ensure, again, we have illegal dispensaries, illegal dispensing of cannabis, whether it's medicinal or not medicinal. Without that testing, you might be getting bad product. And so that's the concern that California had when they went through this process, was to ensure that we had a setup where you're going to have testing for these various part or kinds of, of cannabis. So yes, there is a track, we call it a track and trace system, and so a operator would have to allow a testing laboratory person come into their location, take a sample, or they choose to take a sample. It might be multiple locations, just like they do with hemp. They might pick different parts of, of the product that's available, and then they mark it, they have to trace it to ensure there's, there's a legitimate evidentiary, if you will, process to ensure that it is that product from that location. They take it back to their facility, they do the testing, and then after that, they give a decision and a, a comment about, or a record of, did it pass or not? That is the process that they do, and again, it's for statewide. So one of the challenges you have is you have, as Mr. Eaton said, you have over, almost 7,000 licensed dispensaries or retail operators, and you have 29 testing laboratories. So it is something that we, again, in our city, it's, it's not as evasive as other types of uses you would think because it is strictly a testing laboratory with very minute samples of cannabis.
It seems to me it's, it would be rather difficult to trace everything, especially if it comes in large batches. I mean, I don't want to go into the weeds on this, but I didn't mean a pun there, I'm sorry.
Well, they, they certainly have a system in place. It is something that they're still working on, I understand, but it is a system that they have in, in place now. They're working through some of the hiccups that they might have in a statewide system, but it is, yes, it is a system where they mark it, they have it traced, and they bring it from the location to the laboratory. All that is marked with a number, and it has to be because the, the facility actually has to show that they have been, had their product tested, and it actually is going to help them with their products.
And I presume the reason for this is the product could be dangerous if it were not properly tested, is that it?
Well, the product could have contaminants and, and mold or other things that are, that not supposed to be in the product. I mean, you have cannabis as, as it is, and again, you're concerned about giving a product that has contaminants or something else that's not supposed to be in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Just a quick comment, if I may. Our, our application process is very rigorous for whether it's a testing lab or a medicinal facility. Legendary and Leaf battled it out, you could say, and Legendary came out just slightly ahead, very, very close, and sure enough, we approved Legendary. Sure enough, a year later, we ended up approving Leaf. This, this process for the testing seems rather similar. Atlas and is 5HT, did I get that name right?
5HT Analytics.
5HT also came out very close in, in the application process. There was a third applicant, but they were kind of a distant third. But these two were virtually tied, with Atlas coming out a little bit ahead. What I'm getting at is, considering we ultimately approved two medicinal facilities, do you see any merit in rather than potentially waiting a year to perhaps entertaining the idea of approving two testing facilities here this evening?
The, the quick answer is absolutely. When we, when we prepared this ordinance, and, and it's actually section 529.08, we have, that's where we have the list of how many medicinal facilities we can have. It was initially one, now it would be two if you approve this amendment for cannabis testing laboratories in the same section. Again, maximum of one right now, could be changed to two or to a different number as you, as you want. But what's interesting about this is we anticipated that maybe in the future, council through their discretion and decision, would decide that maybe they want to, to issue more. So in that code section, it actually states that council has that discretion, and they may be able to change these numbers if they wish, and that is certainly in the power of this body to do so. And, and since tonight we are doing amendments, this is our first reading of the amendments, you certainly would have an opportunity, if you so desire, to change that number. And we do have two current applicants, again, who, again, one of them is in the middle of, of a passing grade. I think Mr. Eaton can top, talk more about that. And the second one, Atlas, the number one, certainly is, I think we would consider exceptional rating compared to the 1,800, approximately 1,800 applications that, that HDL or Mr. Eaton has examined. That's a pretty, pretty high score.
All right, thank you. The reason I ask, I mean, I think the city could support two testing labs, and they do provide high-paying jobs, if I'm not mistaken. 15 to 20 employees per, per lab, and we're always looking for high-paying jobs here in the city, so if it's inevitable that we may have a second testing lab, you know, why wait a year? Perhaps we might, we'll have to. Perhaps we might, we'll have to talk about it, but perhaps we might consider that this evening to approve, in fact, two.
Right. I think Ms. Eaton's comment about the 7,000 licensed, again, licensed retailers, and only 29 licensed laboratory facilities, that shows that ratio, there certainly is going to be a need. Again, in Southern California, there's only 16, and none in this immediate region. So certainly, I think, it could probably work if you had more than one.
Yeah, that's a good point. I see these testing facilities as providing really a public benefit, because a lot of the product is tainted with pesticides and who knows what else. And these testing facilities ensure a safe, quality product. So in my mind, not only does it provide high-paying jobs, but also a public benefit. All right, thanks, Mr. Heer. Any other questions of council? If not, we're going to go to public comments. And we're going to start with Mr. Paul Burns. Paul, if you'd come up. Paul, of course, is the CEO of Leaf. Did I get that title correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I'd like to go right to the point for Mayor Protem. We were blindsided. The day after you approved our application, the next day, I took a letter of intent to Lee and Associates, our broker, who forwarded that to the owners of 2,400 Willow. We had everything in that LOI that had been agreed to for two and a half, or two years. Excuse me. We waited a week and a half, got no response. So finally, we followed up, and they sent back and told us that they were concerned about the fact that they're going to be refinancing in four years. And they said that, what would we do, Leaf, if their bank called the note and didn't refinance? And I said, "You knew this all along. We discussed this at the beginning." Well, yeah, but now our attorneys are involved, and they're worried. Long story short, we negotiated with them earnest, and we couldn't get it to work. So we came back to you, to the city, and I submitted an application for a change of location. And I don't want to go through this again either. So we narrowed it down to two locations, 2360 Towns Gate and 265 Sunset. We met with both owners extensively. And the 265 Sunset is refinancing. And said he had no problem with it, he thought it would go through. The word was "thought." We went to 2360 Towns Gate. They own the building outright, have for many years. Then we were concerned about the church. It's right next door. The owner of the building went to the pastor that runs the church, told him what he was negotiating with us for. The pastor told him he has no problem. And they only have church one day a week. They do not have preschool, they do not have daycare on a weekly basis, you know? Like, some churches have it every day in the week and so forth. This church doesn't. If you go to their website, it says one day only, Sundays. And so we felt comfortable with that. And then there's the ballet school, I think it is, excuse me, down four or five buildings down. It's within the 600 feet. But there's a row of trees, and on a separate parcel, there on the parcel to the west, and then there's a row of trees, and then we're on the next parcel. There's five spaces in the building we're in. We're in the second-to-last, furthest from the ballet school. The ballet school is not for just children. It's for adults, all ages. It's been there for years. And you check their website, and it shows you it's all ages. It's not just youth, okay? So it doesn't, under a technical review of the ordinance, it does not qualify as taboo, okay? We've done our homework, and we eliminated Sunset because of the potential for another incident. So right now, 2360 Towns Gate is a viable location. It is M1. We've checked every building within 600 feet, and there is nothing there that the ordinance would exclude as it's written. I don't know how, I don't want to go through this again, believe me, I don't. But this is the only location we can find that meets all the criteria and does not have a lender. So we feel comfortable that it will qualify.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Did you have a question, Mayor Protem?
He did answer my earlier question, and I do appreciate it. So going back to Sunset, should the refinancing go through? And they would offer you to say, you know, you can have it after all. Is that something you would consider?
We went back to him and offered to do a three-year lease. We offered to do 100% of the tenant improvements at no cost to them. We offered to improve, I don't know if you know, but it's nothing but a 15,000-square-foot slab of concrete right now. We offered at our cost to put up the dividing walls to separate the rest of it from our facility. We did everything we could to negotiate, and they wouldn't budge.
Okay, the Sunset location.
No, no, I'm talking about Willow Lane.
No, no, I'm talking about Sunset.
Oh, you're talking about Sunset. Sunset, the owner's name is Ben, and we negotiated with him quite extensively. And he sent us a proposed lease. We reviewed the lease in detail, went back and forth a little bit. But I had a concern, because he is going to refinance, and I did not want to come back here a third time. So I emailed Ben and told him that we were going to pass.
So my question is for the Towns Gate location. I'm assuming you would want to do deliveries, although you did say that you would open a dispensary without deliveries if need be. Do you have enough room to accommodate cars?
Oh, yes. The location at Towns Gate Road is an industrial building, and there's parking all the way around it. There's multiple parking. It's got more parking than either of the other two locations.
Okay, that's all I have for Mr. Burns right now.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Very good, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Burns? If not, I'm going to move on to our next speaker. Thank you. James Goldstein. And James is followed by, oh, Chuck Cohen for Questions Only. So James, you're up. Hi.
Hi. Hello, Mayor, and council people. I'm--
In your city of residence, Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, I live in Santa Rosa Valley, but I am the administrator at Passageway School. And I talked to your councilman there a couple of days ago, or I think yesterday. But I only found out about it about three days ago. I was wondering why a school that's that close to a dispensary that's supposed to be opening up has no knowledge of this. I find out from my neighbors. I never got a notice like this from anybody. When I asked about it, they said you have to be 600 feet. Well, the notices that came to my neighbors, they're more than 600 feet, and they still got notices. This is a school for special-needs kids. It's from preschool to high school, and we also have an adult program that we do community-based work. They work at Salvation Army, they work all around the community there. So I don't know why that letter doesn't come to a school like mine, and I got to find out from my neighbors. So is that what the law is, that only people from 600 feet get these letters, and nobody else around gets these letters? Or what's going on in the community? Can anybody answer that for me?
That actually is the rule.
That's the law?
Within 600 feet, you get a notice. Yeah.
Okay, so--
Did you want to address that, Ms. Eaton? Go ahead.
Yeah, it's actually, state law requires notice for 300 feet, I believe. We extended it to 600 feet.
And knowing that there's a school that close to a cannabis place, the town, I mean, council is okay with something like that? I mean, we have kids that close to it? And our biggest problem at schools is trying to get them off marijuana and keep them clean, and then to have that that close?
We'll discuss that after your comments, and staff can also discuss that. So go ahead.
Okay, so my thing is, is that I don't think it's an appropriate location for that. I have nothing against this company or anything about what they're doing. I think it's great. I just don't think it's appropriate at this particular location that's close to a school. And, you know, we've been there 15 years, I've been there with the school for 10 years, and our biggest fight at the school is marijuana use with our teenagers. And how hard is that going to be for me and my teachers and my staff to explain to them that there is now a dispensary right down the street at 800 feet from what your council is saying that we are? I mean, that doesn't look good with parents, that doesn't look good with the district, that doesn't look good with anybody. And I'm advised, please help us out here and, you know, find another location for these people, because I don't think that's the right location.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. And Chuck Cohen's here for Questions Only, if anyone has any. And, I do, Mayor Protem, you have a question for Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I'd like to ask similar questions, which I ask--
Because we do have Patrick Spillane coming up as well.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll wait.
All right. Let's wait till Patrick comes up then, is that okay? All right, very good. Let us move on then to Marco Inosensi. Evening, Mark.
Good evening, City Council.
Your city of residence, please?
Yes. I live in Newberry Park. I'm with the Lavery Court Owners Association, also in Newberry Park. We are within 600 feet of this proposed site for Legendary at 1339 Lawrence. And we feel there's some issues with the site. I'd like to go into a couple of those. I was a gentleman that spoke to Mr. Heer after the October meeting, which I tried to meet. I tried to make the meeting. I have some concerns about traffic and parking, but there's some additional concerns as well. As I was telling Mr. Heer at that time, so we're right behind a church that's on the corner of Lawrence and Lavery, okay? We are within 600 feet, that church is well within 600 feet. Okay, so I had mentioned that as well. Now, Mr. Goldstein's school, okay, it is two lots up on Lawrence. I do not believe that's 800 feet away. As a matter of fact, Mr. Sam Sabour, who is at 1355, the property next to the property 1339, him and I walked up Lawrence with the GPS app in our phones, okay? And as you guys, as I'm sure you're probably aware, if you've ever tried to locate your phone, it'll tell you, you know, exactly where it is in your house in the room. So those apps are very, very accurate. So walking up Lawrence from the location, the school to the location, we got 633 feet, okay? And Lawrence also curves, okay? So the California Health and Security Code 11362.768 says it's 600 feet from the closest extent of the property lines, okay? So I believe, then, based on the measurement, walking up Lawrence, if you do a straight measurement, okay, that you're going to be very close to 600 feet, maybe within it, all right? And I was just wondering how the city had come up with the 800 feet, because that doesn't seem to be correct based on what we did, right? So being that this is within 600 feet of a church, and close to or within 600 feet of the school, it just doesn't seem like a very good location for this. Now, we're not against medicinal marijuana or anything like that, we just don't feel this is the best location. Now, I also had mentioned parking. That location has five businesses. There's 35 parking spots in front of the building. There's eight parking spots that are unassigned. So we were wondering whether eight parking spots for a 4,000-square-foot retail location is enough based on the city rules. That's a secondary concern, but the concern about the church and the school, I think, should be addressed. So what we're asking is that the city council take a second look at this, do not approve it tonight, because we think there's issues with this location, it's just too close to the school and the church.
Thank you, Mr. Inosensi. I believe we have a question for Mayor Protem. Do you have one?
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Mr. Inosensi, I did not quite hear which group you are representing.
Well, the Lavery Court Owners Association. We have a business park on Lavery Court. It is one property off of the corner of Lavery and Lawrence, so we're right behind the church.
Okay, but there is no residential in the area? So this is all business?
We are a business--
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I was also wondering whether the church was contacted and what they had to say.
We'll talk about that afterwards. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Inosensi.
You're welcome. Thank you, appreciate the time and being able to address you folks.
Thank you for coming down. Patrick Spillane, followed by Loopy Schoenberger. Evening, Mr. Spillane.
Good morning, or good evening, Mr. Adams, Mayor Adams, I should say. Patrick Spillane with Legendary Organics, I'm a principal, and I don't have any prepared remarks, other than just to be available to answer any questions of the council or staff that may have arisen from tonight's matter.
I believe Mayor Protem has one for you.
Thank you. Yeah, my question was similar to what I was asking of Mr. Burns, is, you know, here we are so many months later, and thousands of dollars out of pocket, not only for the city, but also you. And I'm wondering, I was hoping that your application would have all of its ducks in a row as well, but we're hearing tonight there is opposition. Do you know who was notified, and have you tried to do some outreach?
Well, we did do outreach to our immediate neighbors and fellow tenants in the project which we're going. We also attended the community meeting that I believe from Marjan was noticed to folks within 600-plus feet. We also had, I believe, a resident from one of the apartment buildings off of Rancho Caneo who received, obviously, the notice well beyond 600 feet. We're not sure how they obtained it, but they were there and expressed their general concerns over cannabis in general as a product and merchandising. So we think that we have done outreach. You know, this is certainly the Lavery Court we learned about today, and then the Passageway School. You know, we are outside the 600-feet distance that is required, that has been measured from property line to property line by us, and I believe also the city with GIS. Marjan's nodding her head and confirming that. And if you use Apple Maps, it shows it as 800 feet from the Passageway address to the southernmost driveway of our property, which is also the property line. So we do believe that we do comply with the standards that the city council did establish for medical cannabis retailers. We do believe that we are in the heart of the M1 zone, which is where the city did express its desire for it to be located in the industrial section of the city. And so we do believe that we do comply with all of that. As a neighbor and as a business owner, it is always our desire and our intention to be a good neighbor. I think we can express that as a medical cannabis retailer, you must have a doctor's recommendation, you have to be 18 years or older, adult use is 21. We will be interviewing every one of our patients, and to the extent that there is any students of Passageway that are below 18 or provide any documentation that's not authentic, it will all be verified as part of our standard operating procedures. So, you know, we will be verifying every doctor recommendation that is submitted by a person wishing to visit our location. And so if there ever was anything out of sorts, we would identify that and obviously not work with that patient.
So it seems that the first phase or the first go-around of this, you, both applicants, ran into legal hurdles and didn't really have any opposition with the original locations. But now that you seem to have cleared your legal hurdles, you are receiving opposition. And, again, this is a medicinal dispensary, not recreational. But what are you willing to do or can you do in order to alleviate some of the concerns? I know you just mentioned a few things, but I wasn't expecting to hear opposition.
Well, sure. I mean, the other concern was expressed was parking and traffic. I mean, traffic, we will generate a certain number of visitors per day. We are in the M1 zone, we are in M1 zone use, that we are compliant. We do have, I believe, eight spaces in front that would be able to be used by our visitors. We'll be able to use all of the parking after hours. Most of our neighboring businesses are industrial businesses, sheet metal fabricators and whatnot, moving company. So in the evening hours that we're open, they will not be there. In my visits to the site, we see three or four cars that are maybe parked there at night, so we don't expect there to be any issues really after 4:00, 4:30, or even during the day. We've also got the ability to do all of our staff parking in the back, and so it would really just be-- really just be our visitors, our patients, who would be parking in front.
I'm glad you mentioned parking because I did have a question about that. As you may know, we have parking issues in Newberry Park in that area, thanks to Amazon, and I'm wondering whether that location would impact traffic circulation for that area, and that's more of a question of staff.
Now, if you wish, we obviously are looking at the parking and the traffic. We have an operations agreement that we are negotiating. As part of that operations agreement, we do intend to, which was different than last time because of the delivery aspect, to ensure that there is adequate parking for not only their employees, their customers, but also for any vehicles that they use for deliveries. I also want to remind the council that in regards to delivery vehicles, whether it's medicinal or recreational across the state, they have to be unmarked cars. Most of them are going to be very small, like Prius is, for example, just because they're going to do so many miles. But it is a very limited use because they don't want to call attention to the fact that they're delivering or receiving cash for medicinal or recreational marijuana.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, coming down. And Lupe Schoenberger. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor Adam and members of the council. My name's Lupe Schoenberger, and I am on the team for Atlas Qual. I'm the licensing consultant, and I wanted to address the vice mayor's concern for the lease on the property. We're very pleased to have secured a five-year agreement with the property owner. This building is owned outright by the property owner, and we've been negotiating directly with him. So we're very happy that upon your approval, the lease will be executed, it is executed, but it's contingent on your approval. We're also very pleased to be able to provide quality jobs for people of Thousand Oaks and the region. And I wanted to address Councilmember Jones' concern about how the cannabis, how cannabis is moved in the industry. And there is a very robust seed-to-sale tracking system that the state has implemented, and so at any given time, Atlas Qual will have probably a maximum of 20 pounds of cannabis in their facility. They gather small samples of the product, and there are tables and guidelines to ensure that the size of the sample is appropriate. We've done all of the studies and preliminary analysis on the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire safety, OSHA safety requirements that will be needed at that building. So we're poised to pull building permits, get our building, get our business license, and start moving forward with construction. Are there any questions, any other questions about the operation?
You do have one, Councilmember Engler.
Thank you for coming down. I know you have put your application in, assuming there's going to be one lab. There's a motion or there's a thought on our dais here concerning having a second lab okayed. Is that going to affect your business model as you have planned it out?
Of course, I'm going to say that it's going to affect our business model, but, you know, this is an opportunity I see that the council wants to engage in, and it's their prerogative, but of course, it is going to affect our business model.
Thank you, Lupe.
All right, thank you.
We do have one more speaker.
Well, let me just say that there is, okay, there is room for more business. As the consultant indicated, there are 16 businesses currently operating in Southern California, so there is room for more, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
I'm glad to hear you say that. Thank you. And we do have another speaker, David McFarlane.
Hello, David. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. My David McFarlane, resident of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you.
I'm one of the owners of Leaf Dispensary. Mayor Protem, you made a great point about talking about the, if they were to secure the Sunset location, if they were to secure a loan or get a refinance on the property, would that be an option? Of course, we would like any option that fits in the zone. One thing that you have to think about or to consider is any loan on a building that has cannabis dispensary in it, the bank, the financial institution, at any moment can call the note. Excuse me. That happened to me in Santa Barbara. They, the owner of the property needed to do a refi. The bank was made aware of the dispensary, and because of the federal law, they called the note, and it was due within 30 days, where they were going to foreclose on the building, which forced me to have to buy the building and find private funding within 30 days. So that was one of the concerns that we had. And prior to this, the Willow Lane location, I was very adamant about expressing if there was no mortgage on the property, and they absolutely had came forward and told us that it was mortgage-free. Excuse me. So I just wanted to let you know about that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane. All right, that's all of our speakers, and we're going to go back to staff here, but if I may, I'd just like to kick it off and go to Ms. Noonan, our city attorney, and I want to just be clear here that, and ask you this, do the two locations proposed tonight, that's 1339 Lawrence Drive for Legendary and 2360 Townsgate for Leaf, do they comply with our ordinances as written?
So the Legendary location has been evaluated by staff, and it does comply with the ordinance. The Leaf location has been just a quick review of that location, and it appears that it does not violate our ordinance. However, if City Council decides to authorize city staff to evaluate it, then a full evaluation of the new Leaf location will take place as well.
Okay, so that's going to be part of the process, we're still going to evaluate the location that-
The new Leaf location. We'll go through the public, the community meetings, just as we did with Legendary, so forth.
Excellent, all right, thank you very much. And, well, Mr. Heer, would you like to respond to some of the things you heard?
Certainly. We heard a couple of comments regarding concerns about the closeness to a high school or to a church. And again, I want to remind council and for the new councilmembers here, when we were initially doing this evaluation, we had to pick a zone or zones for this use, and council's direction was to select the M1 zone. It is limited, it's a very robust zone as far as leasing, so there are little opportunities to purchase or to lease a location in the M1 zone, especially at the time. It was so difficult that we wanted to ensure that we had a strong panel of applicants when we were doing this evaluation over a year and a half, two years ago. So in fact, after we initially started, we were getting concerns and comments from applicants saying it's very difficult for them to find a location in the M1 zone that met the strict guidelines that we had, including the 600-feet sensitive use. So we had to do this balance, and in April of 2018, this body actually approved an amendment to Section 529.24, and that was, it did two things as far as the distance for the sensitive uses. One of them is that if there was a freeway, when you did the distance from the location to a sensitive use, and the freeway was in between, that would be something that we would consider, it could be less than 600 feet because we had a freeway corridor actually between the two uses, or the two, the sensitive use and the facility. The other one was, we had a situation in the industrial park where a lot of these are industrial park settings, and so what happened is you have a business that's in the back of this complex, but the property line was literally 200 feet away from this business or 300 feet away. So the Second Amendment in April of 2018 was to actually change it so it would be measured from the door of the complex to the sensitive use property line. In this case, with the school that was mentioned today, from property line to property line, it's more than 600 feet, and that is why they were not given any notice. Again, we sent out notices to the property owners within that 600-foot area. But I just want to bring that up to your attention because we had to do this balance of where we're going to put or allow this type of new use, a use that you guys were concerned about, council was concerned about. So we did select the M1 zone, and it is a very tight, difficult location to do, so that's why we picked the 600-feet sensitive use. And again, with that, it is still very difficult for individuals, as you heard tonight from two of the retail operators, to find a location. It certainly is a challenge for them. So that is something that we had to balance, and we did that with, again, consistent with state law as well. You also heard comments about parking. We are analyzing the parking. The owners of Legendary Organics are well aware of their requirements. We, as staff, are well aware of the concerns in that area as far as Amazon or other issues that have erupted recently in that section, so we are cognizant of that, we evaluate that. And again, we do have an operations agreement that we will be negotiating before this use goes into play, and that is important because it has all these conditions. It has conditions about security, it has conditions about loitering, it has conditions about safety of employees, it has conditions, in fact, about the employees' actions to ensure that the employees are being trained properly. One of the reasons why Legendary shined in their application, again, this is years ago now, was because they had a great training program for their employees, and that was something that HDL will comment on, was something that was above and beyond a typical applicant. So they are cognizant of that, and I expect the same thing from any of our applicants if they enter into a negotiation for an operations agreement for our city, because they actually have to follow those rules, and they have to comply with those rules, and if they don't comply with those rules, then that could be a violation of the operations agreement. We also heard from Atlas QAL and from the mayor, as far as this concept of possibly expanding to more than one at this time. We certainly leave it to council to make that decision if they want to. If you are going to do that, I can address that and make sure we're very specific how we would put that into our ordinance tonight, so it's clear for the record. But I also believe that Ms. Marjan here, she is the one that did the measurements, and she can confirm the steps that she took in regards to Legendary Organics on their street.
All right, thank you, Mr. Heer. Any further questions of staff?
I think we're going to get a definition of how the measurements were made.
Yes, good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Beg your pardon.
The city uses the GIS system, which is used for creating and managing geographic information, so we input the desired buffer measurement, and in this case was 600. Specifically, when staff did the measurement from property line to property line, in other words, from Legendary's property line to Passageway High School's property line, the exact measurement from GIS was 668 feet, and from property line to front door was measured at 791 feet.
Ready, thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'd like to, with your indulgence, my fellow councilmembers, there really are four issues here we have to look at this evening, and I thought we'd just kind of take them one at a time, keep things simple. The first is the testing laboratory, and the, certainly, we'd need a motion to select Atlas per the staff's recommendation, if you so desire, and I'd also appreciate if we could discuss, as mentioned with Mr. Heer and as by Atlas themselves, a second testing lab, which would be 5HT. Councilmember Bilda Lepenya.
Thank you, Mayor Adam.
Mayor Protem, Bilda Lepenya.
That's quite all right, still a councilmember. 5HT analytics would be the second application, and-
Yes.
My question is this, the applicant does not appear to be here tonight, even though they did score almost an 85, four points behind the first, the number one, and making a decision without their input, without being able to ask many questions, I'm wondering whether they can be brought back at a later time. I would feel uncomfortable handing out a license without having the applicant here. The applicant is probably assuming that there is no, it's either one license or nothing, and so they're probably surprised to hear that we might be entertaining a second license, so I would prefer that they actually be here for that discussion.
I think that's a good point, and I think you're probably right, they're not here because they assumed that we were going to pick one. But I take it from your comments that you would be willing to listen to the potential of having a second testing lab here in the city of Thousand Oaks and not necessarily waiting for another year to do that. All right, I think that's reasonable.
If I could just interrupt for a second, I would recommend, however, if the council's inclined to consider two laboratory, testing laboratories, that the amendment to the ordinance take place tonight, since we're doing a first reading, so at least amend it to allow for two, although you're not offering, you know, giving the second permit or second license to the 5HT at this point, I would at least suggest making changes to the ordinance tonight.
Makes sense. Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was just going to say that the, I appreciate what Councilmember Bilda Lepenya is saying. I would think that we would be able tonight to amend the ordinance and then have our staff approach these people and see what their thoughts are and if they're still interested. To have them come back is appropriate as well, but I think we need to get the ball rolling if we're going to do it.
Okay. Well, would you care to make a motion to that effect then? And that'll be the first issue.
Yes, I'd be happy to make a motion that we go forward with the, I don't have the name in front of me, our-
Atlas.
Atlas, Atlas Testing Facility, and also amend our ordinance to include reaching out to the second group as well.
And authorize the city manager to execute an operations agreement with Atlas, subject to city attorney approval.
Thank you, city attorney.
He was about to say that.
Yes, he was, I know.
All right. Any discussion of the motion? If not, can we prepare the vote, please?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. The second issue is to amend our cannabis operations ordinance with some of the common sense changes that Council, Mayor Protem, Bilda Lepenya suggested, and myself, you know, operating hours, no need for an appointment, et cetera, et cetera. Any discussion on that one? No? Mr. McCoy, would you like to make a motion on that, please?
I motion that we approve the recommendations of Mayor Protem, Bilda Lepenya. How's that?
Well, okay. Do we want to refine that a little bit?
So it'll be a motion to approve changes or amendments to the cannabis ordinance, including the new one that you just added to allow two testing facilities.
What Ms. Noonan said.
All right.
So that would be, for the council, that would be 529.08 subdivision B. It would go from cannabis testing laboratory maximum of one to maximum of two.
Correct.
Very good.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Yeah, let's go to a vote on that, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and the third issue before us is approval of Legendary's new location and authorization for the city manager to negotiate an operations agreement. Any discussion on that one?
Also move-
Mayor McCoy, or Mayor, oh, gotcha.
That's all right.
Promoted already. Councilmember McCoy.
I just want to share my frustration that the Passageway School expressed, that having a school within such a close location is troublesome, and then with the two churches, I'm in full agreement. But the reality is, we live in a state that approved this. I'm in full agreement. But the reality is, we live in a state that approved this. And this is the law. And so, we're following that. And I understand their concerns, but I'm comfortable moving ahead with what's been put before us.
So, you move?
I make a motion to approve the location for.
Legendary.
Legendary. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember McCoy. And the operations agreement.
Yes.
Thank you. Vote, please, on that. All right. You had a question? You had a question on that motion?
I just wanted to basically confirm that with this vote, we are authorizing new locations for both applicants?
No. Just Legendary.
Oh, this is Legendary.
We haven't gotten to Leaf yet.
Oh, okay, because I was trying to find that in our recommendations list, and I couldn't find it. So, this is Legendary. And.
The Lawrence Drive location.
Can we put, I'm wondering about both applicants, whether we can put a timetable and everything that in a year from now, if that doesn't work out, that perhaps we just forget the idea of issuing licenses altogether. I'm just wondering if that is something that can be considered.
I'm not inclined to do that personally. I feel like they're on adequate notice that they need to open their facility.
And if they have problems and need to look at to get another location, this is hypothetically.
Well, then I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. That would be my feeling.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
If it brings you any comfort, Mayor Protem, you know, we only had two applicants in the process. That's why there's two applicants that are involved in this. Both applicants are at play now, having an opportunity to open. They've had every opportunity to open and have not done so to date. So, in the event that they're unable to open at this location, we would be forced to come back to council regardless of that.
Good point.
By default, that would happen.
Good point.
That's good enough. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, and that passes.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. And finally, number four. This would be for Leaf.
I'll move the new location for Leaf.
All right.
So, for clarification, you're authorizing the directing staff to look at the new location and process a new application for that new location.
Exactly.
Yeah. Any discussion to that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to add that I commend you, Leaf, for reaching out to the pastor of the church. Legendary would have done you a good realm to do the same. But in both cases, it's within the law, so I'm happy to approve it.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. All right. We have a motion on the floor. If you prepare the vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right. Very good. I would suggest that you open these facilities at these locations. All right. Thank you very much for coming. And thank you, council members. It's kind of a long issue, and we broke it down and got it done.
Mayor, if I could read the ordinance title. It's an ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Title 5 regarding allowing number of cannabis dispensaries in the city delivering, delivery of cannabis, appointment requirement, and hours of operation for all cannabis businesses in Thousand Oaks, MCA 2019-70879.
Thank you very much. Let's break for five minutes. We've been at this for 2:45 minutes. Five-minute break.
Let us resume, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back. We are going to now embark upon a public hearing about the Caneo Creek Southwest Park. If you would announce that, please. Ms. Rodriguez?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8D regarding Caneo Creek Southwest Park, Z 2019-70298, DP 2019-70291, OTP 2019-70292, PMW 2019-70293, MND 2019-70309. The applicant is Caneo Recreation and Park District. And a speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has presented a speaker card. In pursuit to council standards, the speaker will have five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Towns, I believe you have an introduction to make?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I'm very pleased to introduce Kristen Rice, to my right, who will be presenting the Caneo Creek Southwest Park project to you tonight. Ms. Rice came to the city about nine months ago from the city of Calabasas. She's a senior planner, and her day job is providing the day-to-day management of the general plan update. But she does have a few projects such as this. She holds a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from California State University Northridge. And again, very pleased to have her on board. She is one of our newest hires. And we're very pleased with the talent that has been joining our department. Thank you.
Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. I have a brief presentation prepared for you tonight. In order to develop the Caneo Creek Southwest Park, the following entitlements are being requested: A zone change to change the zoning classification of the parcels located on Page Lane and Combs Avenue from R1 and RO to PL; A parcel map waiver to merge five parcels into two lots; A development permit for the construction of the park and associated amenities; And an oak tree permit to encroach and prune 13 protected trees. The subject site is approximately 14.1 acres, and it is owned and managed by the Caneo Recreation Park and Park District. The undeveloped site is located north of Combs Avenue, west of the 23 freeway, and it's bisected by Page Lane. Access to the subject site is available from Page Lane and Combs Avenue. The project site consists of five parcels. Two of them are located west of Page Lane, which comprises 7.18 acres, and the other three are located east of Page Lane, which totals 6.92 acres. The surrounding uses include single-family residences to the north, the west, and the south. Just a little bit of background regarding this particular project. In the late 1990s, CRPD utilized a focus group and held several open community meetings to obtain feedback and input towards their master plan, which included the subject park site. On January 21st, 1999, the Caneo Creek Park Master Plan was approved by the CRPD Board of Directors. And in January 2018, CRPD held an open community meeting to confirm the direction of the park and solicit feedback from the public. On April 4th, 2019, the CRPD submitted the current proposed project. And on May 21st, 2019, City Council approved a request to allow for concurrent processing of development applications in conjunction with a zone change for the proposed development of this park. On June 24th, 2019, Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the proposed project. And the project is before you now because the City Council is the decision-making body for a zone change and these associated entitlements. I have just a couple photos showing the area of the undeveloped park site. This is a photo facing northeast, and I'm currently standing at the intersection of Combs Avenue and Page Lane, but I'm standing more on Combs Avenue. This is a photograph at the intersection of Page Lane and Combs Avenue facing northwest of the project site. And this is a photograph. I'm standing at the northern portion of the park, looking south. And the last photo, I'm standing on Combs Avenue facing north to the entrance of the existing bike path that runs along the northern property line, which connects to the overall bike route system. To the left and adjacent to the park is Lang Creek. The subject property is currently designated existing parks, golf courses, and open space on our land use element map of the general plan. However, the property is currently zoned single-family residential and single-family estate. And a park is not an allowed use in either of these residential zones. To allow for development of a park on the subject property, a zone change from R1 and RO to PL is necessary. And upon adoption of the zone change, the project will be consistent with the general plan land use designation. The proposed park is intended to be a neighborhood park with passive uses. As shown on this rendering, the proposed features include a Two Mesh Creek-themed playground, a restroom, a porous asphalt parking lot, picnic shade structures, equestrian and pedestrian trail, and other amenities. And this is just a rendering of the proposed playground area. This is a, this map is an appendix to the tree report and shows where the existing trees are located on the project site. There are 47 protected trees within the project site area and approximately 192 oak trees located in the oak woodland, which is shown in the green area at the top of the map. The green area on the map represents the trees to remain untouched, and the yellow refers to the 13 trees which would incur proposed encroachment activities. And there are a few areas on this map shaded in red. That's the area where trees would be pruned. The proposed project is designed to avoid removing any protected trees, and construction activities are not anticipated to result in any adverse significant long-term impacts. To further ensure any impacts to the trees are minimized, a series of mitigation measures have been included as project conditions of approval and within the mitigation monitoring program. The project has been reviewed for conformance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. For this project, CRPD is the lead agency, since it is the agency which plans to carry out the project, and the city of Thousand Oaks is the responsible agency. It's the city's responsibility to review and consider the mitigated negative declaration, but we are not required to approve it. As the lead agency, CRPD had the MND prepared for the project, and it was released for public review in January of this year. In March of this year, the CRPD Board of Directors adopted the MND and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Lastly, the proposed project is consistent with your City Council Goal G, to ensure that residents have access to high levels of parks, recreation, education, and leisure programs and services. With that, staff recommends that City Council introduce this ordinance to amend the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code relating to the official zoning map and adopt the resolution to approve the associated entitlements. That concludes my presentation, and my applicant from CRPD is available here to answer any of your questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Questions for staff? All right. Councilor Angler?
Yes, thank you so much, and it'd be nice to get a park in that area that's been so long waiting to have a little neighborhood park there. I, just one question. I know we're pretty far down the line on design. What types of access, people with access needs, are we going to have at that park that will allow participation by everybody?
Oh, Mr. Mooney, would you like to address that?
Sure.
This is Andrew Mooney, and why don't you identify yourself, sir?
Andrew Mooney, Senior Park Planner with Caneo Recreation and Park District. So as far as accessibility goes, the existing grading of the property is relatively flat. We do have a parking lot that will have an ADA-accessible parking stall, as well as access into the park site. And then there will be from, from the west, across the bridge there, that will come into the, into the western portion of the park. There'll be access there from an existing bike path that is, again, relatively flat. All of the new proposed walkways should be all ADA-compliant.
In terms of the playground for younger children, is there any thought in that location for access as well?
Correct. There's full access into the playground, as well as all the use areas throughout the park on both portions.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Adam. I just have a quick question. Please refresh my memory. But did you say that a portion of the trees that will be transplanted are part of a, what do you call it? Not development agreement, but requirements from previous...
Oak tree permit.
Conditions to...
Is that it?
To replace oak trees on a three-to-one basis? I thought we were going to have an oak tree forest there from previous agreements.
I believe you're referring to the 299 project?
It could be that. I'm not sure.
I think there was a previous project located nearby that the approval required mitigation trees to be planted. They were black walnuts and oak trees. And yes, yes, they will be accommodated, provided that that project moves forward on this site. And I do have a plan of where those trees would go.
Ah, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, there we go. Mr. Mooney, you were listed as a speaker. Did you have a statement that you'd like to make?
I was actually just here for, to, for questions and to support city staff.
All right, very good. I'd ask you a quick one. The city operates a bike path, and I think it runs from Caneo Creek north through the library, through the teen center, the global adult center, does it not? And it's going to connect...
Correct. It technically terminates at the street, but city planning staff would have a better idea how it moves through the city. But it's directly adjacent to our park parcel. So this would be the last southern-developed portion of the Caneo Creek complex.
Okay, so it will connect, then?
Correct.
Oh, great. Okay, very good. All righty, thank you. Any further discussion from staff? No? All right. Questions from the council? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to look for a motion. And I've got one from Mayor Protem, Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. It would be my pleasure to move recommendations one and two for Item 8D.
All righty. And if there's no discussion of the motion, can we get a vote, please?
The motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code relating to official zoning by changing the zoning classification of five parcels located at 901 Page Lane and 835 Combs Avenue, Zone Change Z 2019-70298, and the applicant is Caneo Recreation and Park District.
Thank you. Yeah, this is great. It's going to be a great addition to our park system. I think Vice Chair Nichols is here from Caneo Wrecking Park. Is this her 61st park? Did I get that right? Somewhere around there?
We have 63 facilities. We have about 55 parks.
65, yeah. Well, that's what the city's all about. Great recreation for its residents. Thank you. All righty. Let us move on now to another public hearing. And we're going to talk about the annexation of two separate parcels. If you'd open that hearing, please, Ms. Rodriguez?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8E regarding annexation and pre-zone requests for two separate parcels, Annex 2019-70198 and Z 2019-70199. The applicants are Dan Driscoll and Bill Vlatzos. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three individuals have presented speaker cards. In pursuit to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Mr. Nielsen, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The request before you tonight is to annex and pre-zone two separate parcels within the Ventura Park area of the city. These are two separate property owners that the Community Development Department, we actually combined into one application in order to try and streamline that process to make it easier to go through for the, any potential future development. And here you can actually see, these are the site locations. A little bit of background on this particular project. The property owners of these parcels, they're actually seeking to construct single-family residences on their vacant pieces of property. The, and they are almost completely surrounded by existing single-family developments, both inside the, within the county area and also within the city, across the city limits. Now, in order for these particular parcels to be developed, they actually have to be annexed into the city in order to receive any water and wastewater services. Now, the city, we actually have to go through and do the, conduct the review of these, of the annexation requests and the pre-zones. But the ultimate approval of the annexation ends up with Ventura County LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. The first step of this process was actually done, conducted by the Planning Commission back in September. They reviewed and forwarded a recommendation of the pre-zoning to residential plan development. And that pre-zoning would actually become effective once annexation is approved. A little bit of evaluation on this, on the two parcels. They currently have a city general plan designation of low-density residential. Under this density, under this designation, only a single, one, a single-family residence would be allowed to be developed on each of the parcels. The property locations, they are located within the planning area and the city urban restriction boundaries. And currently under Ventura County zoning, they have, it's a rural agricultural zone. Now, when properties are annexed into the city, they actually should be compliant, pre-zoned with the most applicable zoning that the city has. In this case, Thousand Oaks, we do have a rural agricultural zone. However, the size of the parcels are not compliant with that rural agricultural zone. So now, the next most appropriate zoning that the city actually has that is still compliant with the county zoning is the residential plan development. Associated with the RPD zone, we do have to put on a sub-zone. In this case, staff has proposed, it's the 4.5 units per acre. That is compliant with the general plan designation of low-density. Even with the 4.5 units per acre, that still only allows one single-family development residence under, on each property. Now, looking at these, at the annexations, LAFCO and, as well as basically almost all of the cities within Ventura County have actually agreed on and adopted the Guidelines for Orderly Development. These guidelines, they actually clarify, it's the urban planning relationship between all of the cities and the county. And it's, the main purpose of this is to promote development within all of the existing city boundaries or to have those, any new development be annexed into the cities. Looking at the, at the proposed annexations and the pre-zoning, it is, they do meet the intent of these guidelines as it moves forward. With that said, the project, it is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15319 because it's the annexation of two small parcels, and their future uses are also going to be, will also be exempt under the provisions of SEQA since it's just the construction of a single-family residence. So with all of that, the pre-zoning and the annexations, they are, one, they're consistent with the general plan designations. They're compliant with all the applicable laws, regulations, and policies. The, they do not, they would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, and they are exempt from SEQA. Given that, staff recommends that City Council, one, adopt a resolution to annex the subject properties; two, authorize Community Development Director to submit an application to LAFCO; and three, to re-entitle only an ordinance to establish the residential plan development zone, which would then become effective upon any future annexation. If the council approves the project tonight, the next steps would be for a, the project to go to Ventura County LAFCO for their review and approval, as well as a precise plan of design, application, and review by the city and building and safety plan check process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. We have a question for Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. A quick question. So these two parcels in this unincorporated area, are they the first ones in that area, or how am I reading this map?
No, they are not the first parcels to be annexed within this county peninsula of the city. There have been other parcels. If you'll forgive me, I am going to try and get to one of the other maps. Here we are. So if we can actually look at the map on here, there's, can we see the cursor? Yeah. Here we actually have Lynn Road adjacent to the top of this circle. And so there's some of the parcels directly adjacent to Lynn Road. Those had actually been annexed into the city. Additionally, towards the bottom of the circle, there, you see there's the blue and then some of the, the other kind of yellowish zoning. Those parcels had also been annexed into the city separately, independently. So as this particular county peninsula has been developed over the years, certain parcels have actually been annexed into the city as it's been going on.
So the white all around them are still unincorporated and not annexed?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let us, thank you for that report. All right, thank you. Let us, thank you for that report. Let us go to our speakers. And first up, we have Bill Vlatzos, followed by Dan Driscoll.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Don.
Good evening.
Bill Vlatzos, Newbury Park, 42 years resident. Dan outlined and summarized that very effectively. LAFCO requires any, any property that gets its services from the city to annex to the city. What we're doing is just complying with city and LAFCO regulations. That's, we're going through the process and abiding by all the zoning and building requirements that the city now has, and just instead of the county. The property was county, being annexed to the city because it gets services from the city. And LAFCO requires this, actually.
It's a wonderful city. I think you'll be very happy to be in it.
That's short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vlatzos. Dan Driscoll. Followed by Valerie Ewald.
Thank you for your time. Yeah, I would just like to get on with the process of building this house that I've planned out, and this is just a hurdle that I've been told that I need to go over, and I would love to be, become part of the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Valerie Ewald.
Hi, I'm Valerie Ewald. I live in Newbury Park, next door to where Mr. Vlatzos would like to build. This is kind of fun for me. I'm a native of Thousand Oaks, so, and so is my husband. So, my first city council meeting. We just have a question. So, I'm still going to be unincorporated, and then there'll be someone, we're worried about the roads. So with a small private road, how will that work with someone who's being annexed to the city next to us? I guess we have questions about that. The road has a lot of potholes. We're just kind of wondering how that works with the city services, when he's going to be, he'll actually then, he'll be a member of Thousand Oaks and he'll be able to vote in the elections, and then we don't? Just, to summarize them, I'm curious how this works.
We'll have a staff response for you.
Okay.
All right.
Cool.
Thank you, Valerie. In fact, that's the end of our speakers. So, staff, would you like to respond?
Good evening, Mayor Adams, members of the council. I'm Brad Bussell. I'm with Public Works. And yes, it'll still remain private. The roads out there are all private. This road, Edwards, is which Mr. Vlatzos will be building on, will still remain private. It will still remain a private road.
All right, very good. Any questions from council members? Not seeing any, then I am going to close the public hearing and look for a motion or discussion. And I see Mayor Potem is up first. Quick with the button.
Well, if it's okay with my colleagues, I would like to move recommendations one, two, three, and, three, yes. And having a private road, obviously you're responsible for maintaining it and continue to do so. Then, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion on the floor. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion passes five zero, and your ordinance title is an ordinance pre-zoning two separate properties, one on the west side of South Venture Park Road at the terminus of Pepper Road, APN 673-0-110-310, and the other on the east side of Edward Road, approximately 350 feet north of Kathleen Drive, APN number 673-0-120-070, prior to annexation, Z-2019-70199. And the applicants are Dan Driscoll and Bill Vlatzos.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, we're going to move on to a public hearing. How about that? This will be on the electric vehicle charging station user fee. If you'd announce that hearing, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8F regarding electric vehicle charging station user fees. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this hearing, and at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
All right, thank you. Helen Cox, our sustainability manager, is going to address this one.
Good evening. I see that my PowerPoint hasn't loaded, so I'm just going to go with the script here quickly. So, good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm here to present the staff's recommendations for user fees at the municipally-owned electric vehicle charging stations that are available for public use. We have some recently installed chargers and 20, actually 12 different chargers with 22 actual ports, charging ports on those. 16 of those are public, and we require to set user fees to cover the cost of electricity usage and network and maintenance fees. Staff research user fees in other local jurisdictions and determine that rates between 17 and 39 cents per kilowatt hour are being charged, although some cities provide free charging and others set a per-hour rate. Based on our usage projections, staff recommends setting a rate of 26 cents per kilowatt hour initially. These fees will be revisited in the next budget cycle when usage data becomes available. In future, if the demand for chargers exceeds their availability, we recommend a parking charge for fully charged vehicles to help free up any charging spaces. In addition to the user fee proposal, council's also asked to appropriate funds to cover the annual network and maintenance fees for the EV chargers for the second year of the budget cycle. The first year's fees were appropriated when council authorized the charger installation in April of this year. These funds will be partially offset by user fees. Thank you. We're available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Questions from council? Councilmember Angler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the $2 fee for parking after the full charge has been achieved in a vehicle. How are we going to enforce that? Is, how are we going to collect fees? That's the, a little bit of the aspect I didn't understand.
So the, the admin, the interface that we have, the access to the data allows for both, it allows us to determine when vehicles are fully charged, and so one can program the chargers themselves to both notify the user when their vehicle is fully charged, give them some amount of leeway, say an hour to go recover the vehicle, and if they continue to leave it there after that time, then the chart, then the parking fee would be imposed.
So it's going to be in, kind of in, within the system itself is going to be charging if it's past the charging time?
Yes, yes, we can customize it.
We don't need to have police enforcement. It's, it's going to be done automatically.
No, no, absolutely not.
Thank you.
All right. Just a quick question. So electric vehicles would be environmentally superior to other modes of transportation, I believe? And it looks like we've set the rate here to encourage the usage. So I take it we're recovering most of our costs on this?
So it's a little difficult to predict because we don't really know what the usage is, and obviously there's a kind of a demand and supply that has to come into effect here. So we're basing this rate on what we project the usage to be, but it may not be up to that rate initially. But one hopes that after a year or two, we reach that, that usage rate that would recover the costs.
I see. Maybe we can adjust it after we get a little bit of usage. Okay, very good.
Absolutely.
All right. We have no speaker cards, and if there's no further questions, I'm going to close the hearing and look for a motion.
I move to approve staff recommendations one and two.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. Prepare the vote, please.
Can I just get clarification that it is for one and two, correct?
No.
Okay.
One and two.
The motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. All righty. Now, we are going to actually have a department report instead of a public hearing, so you can rest easy for a moment, Ms. Rodriguez. All right. And this will be on the franchise solid waste agreement, and Ms. Cox is going to lead off with that, and Mr. Finley will also be available for questions. Take it away.
Thank you. I'm also joined here on the dais this evening by our consultant, Richard Tagore Erwin, who's the president and CEO of R3 Consulting Group. Council set the development of a sustainability strategic plan as one of its top 10 priorities for this fiscal year. This plan was reviewed by council in September and includes waste as a key component. The city's solid waste franchise agreement largely controls how our waste is handled. The current exclusive franchise agreement is scheduled to expire at the end of 2021. This provides the city an opportunity to rethink our waste and recycling operations. Long-term agreements were first entered into in 1994. With consolidation that's happened in the industry, today we're served by two haulers, Waste Management and EJ Harrison. Franchisees serve specific geographic areas within the city. The residential service is divided between the two haulers as shown. Waste man, sorry, Waste Management serves the entire city with commercial service. The current contract contains an automatic extension provision that will extend its term through 2024 unless notification is issued to the haulers by the end of this year. This evening, council is being asked to choose between one of two options: to either go out with an RFP for a new solid waste franchise for the city, which would go into effect January the 1st, 2022, or to renew the franchise with the current two haulers under a revised agreement. This is an important decision for the city. The franchise grosses over $20 million a year. I'll now present an overview of our existing rates and then consider the terms of a new Residential service is bundled with three carts, one for trash, one for recycling, and one for yard waste. The contract allows for rate increases annually following the Consumer Price Index, but contract negotiations in 2013 resulted in concessions that limited rate increases between 2013 and 2015. Since 2017, external factors have strongly influenced rates. In particular, the collapse of the overseas market for recyclables and new regulations affecting the recycling of green or organic waste. In Thousand Oaks, the current basic residential service costs $33.52 a month, rising to $35.78 in 2020 as a result of the annual CPI adjustment and cost increases for green waste handling. This was approved by council last month. I've presented here a comparison with some other local jurisdictions. Note that there is some small differences from what you had in the staff report because some of the data has been updated for new 2019 and 2020 rates where they've been, come available. So a comparison with other local jurisdictions suggests that this is in the mid to high range, but it's critical to note that many factors play into these rates: availability and distance to facilities, the effective date of the rates and of the contract, franchise and other fees, and other services that could be included, such as street sweeping, which is included for Thousand Oaks but not for all cities, and other city services. A comparison of commercial service rates across jurisdictions is even more challenging because as well as the complicating factors already mentioned for residential service, commercial service comes in many flavors. There are four different sized bins that are available, and collections can occur at different frequencies. 78% of city accounts utilize a three-cubic yard bin, but collection frequency for these varies from once to six times a week. This chart shows a comparison of a three-cubic yard monthly trash service rates for once-a-week service. Costs in the city are in the mid-range for the county, and rates across LA County are very variable. Rates for commercial recycling in the city are tied to trash rates. These rates are significantly discounted to encourage recycling, and in the past, these discounts have been offset by recycling revenue. In today's market, however, recycling costs as much, if not more, than trash disposal. An adjustment from 30% to 31.5% of the trash rate was made 18 months ago. However, our haulers are seeking additional recycling rate increases. It's evident from this graph that these rates are low in comparison to other jurisdictions. With the assistance, sorry, with the assistance of our consultant, R3, negotiations with the city haulers have resulted in an MOU which establishes the key terms and five-year rates for a new agreement as listed in the staff report. Residential rates have already been established for 2020. Under the MOU, there would be some adjustments in 2021 and 2022, but no CPI increase until 2023. With an estimated 3% CPI annually, this would result in a cumulative 13% increase in residential rates between 2020 and 2025. Commercial trash rates would be frozen at 2020 rates for the next two years, and apart from some adjustments made to standardize rates across service categories, rates would then increase with CPI in subsequent years. Commercial recycling rates would increase from 31.5% of trash rates currently to 60% of trash rates in 2025 and likely continue to increase annually at a similar rate beyond Increases in commercial organics rates will be tied to CPI but may need to be reevaluated in future when an organics processing facility becomes available within the county. The combined effect of increases in trash, recycling, and organics rates will impact commercial customers differently depending on their waste volume and service frequently. The example shown here illustrates the effect on quite a common service level: three-yard trash bin, a three-yard recycling bin, and a 64-gallon organics cart that's serviced once a week. However, some lower-volume customers who don't have organics collection currently, such as those with a one- or two-cubic yard bin, will be more heavily impacted since the state requires them to recycle organics starting in 2022, and this chart shows how their rates would be affected. If council selects the RFP option, staff would issue a non-extension notice to the current haulers and proceed with taking the necessary steps towards a new agreement with an aim to bring one to council approximately one year from now. If council approves the renewal option, staff and our consultants will continue to negotiate with our current haulers and bring back a final agreement to council in the next quarter. This concludes my presentation. We're available for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. And do we have some questions? Yes, we do. Councilmember Rob McCoy.
Dr. Cox, if the staff goes to negotiate with the two current haulers and we don't like it, what are our options?
So we've set a limit on how long those negotiations would go on for. We would have to come back with an agreement by the end of February if council did not like that agreement at that point. At that point, we would move into the RFP process.
So if we went with the two haulers we currently have, we still have the option of number one if we don't reach the agreement we're seeking?
That's correct, but the major deal points are laid out--
I'm sorry?
That is correct, but the major deal points are laid out in the MOU that's attached to the staff report. So the most major of those deal points have-- we've already-- we've reached agreement on--
In other words, if the city council basically goes with option number two and directs staff to continue negotiating the exclusive franchise agreements, you're also approving those deal points, which are big concepts, of course, you know, the writings, what's the devil's in the detail, but you are-- you would be approving those specific deal point terms tonight that would be incorporated into the agreement.
And I think, just to put an even finer point on it, staff has sat down with the existing haulers in preparation for tonight. The haulers have put what essentially-- and correct me, Dr. Cox, if I'm wrong with this, but essentially their best offer on the table. And so it would be important for the council to recognize, if you elect to move forward tonight, you're not going to see-- we wouldn't anticipate anything substantially different than what's before you tonight.
That's correct.
All right. Okay. Let us go to the speaker cards. And first up, we have Mike Harrison. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor Adam. Good evening, councilmembers and staff. Again, my name is Mike Harrison, and I am from Newberry Disposal, and I reside in Camarillo. I am a civil engineer by trade, and I currently serve as a company's engineering manager. Some of what I'm about to say may be known to all of you, but as we sit here tonight to discuss this important topic, I think it's important to remember how we got here as a company. For the past 87 years, Harrison Industries has been using forward thinking to help communities where we live and work prepare for the future of responsible integrated waste management. We believe it all starts with a community-based service. Early on, my grandfather understood that integrated asset management was vital in order to provide quality service to the community. For example, he implemented several technologies himself back in the '30s and '40s to help him get the job done. Some examples of that include installing balers to help him process cardboard and to install dump mechanisms on his flatbeds so that he wouldn't have to offload trucks with a pitchfork. At that time, these were innovations for him that showed his ability to get the job done. Having a vision for tomorrow by implementing innovative, progressive, and sustainable solutions established a framework to building a strong business foundation, which was developed with a belief that service is everything. This model provided a map for us to navigate the complexities of infrastructure development for collection fleets, facilities, and programs necessary to provide self-reliant service. It all starts with collecting the waste stream, from single container service to semi-automated service to automated service, to the use of alternative fuels. Our development of fleet services has allowed us to adapt with the ever-changing material management regulations. We installed the first liquefied natural gas station in Ventura County in 2003, and in 2016, we installed a compressed natural gas station. In 2008, we voluntarily joined the climate registry so that we can measure our carbon footprint as an operation. And today, in conjunction with our recycling services-- Today, our fleet, in conjunction with our recycling services, yields an overall ratio of operational emissions of negative 14. In addition, we're currently in the process of converting the remainder of our diesel fleet to renewable diesel. This basically means that we're not going to be using petroleum-based fuels anymore and that the renewable diesel is derived entirely of organic waste from gases from landfills to dairies to wastewater treatment plants.
Mike, I have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your time has expired.
All right. I'll just say this. The point of all this discussion is to reiterate that we're here, we have the tools to satisfy the state regulations, we're local, and we have a proven track record of doing whatever it takes to get the job done. We put our money where our mouth is to display our strong conviction that service is everything, and we're excited to continue to working with the city on these important issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Bill Camarillo, followed by Mike Smith. Do you give us your name and city of residence, please?
Good evening. My name is Bill Camarillo, and I'm-- I live in Camarillo. Pretty ironic, but--
I was guessing that.
Yeah, so I am the CEO of Agarman. We are an organics waste diversion company. We are the largest organics waste diversion company in Southern California and probably the largest in the state of California. We service over 12 counties, over 200 communities throughout the entire state, and organics is the next frontier in diverting waste from landfills. So because of some of the regulation that you heard about today, SB 1383 requirements kicking in, we have to divert 75% of all organic waste from landfills by 2025, with a penalty phase beginning in 2022. For the state of California, that's 20 million tons of organic waste. To give you perspective, Agarman today recycles 600,000 tons a year of organic waste for all those communities in California. And why are we doing it? It's all part of the climate change bill, greenhouse gas emission reductions. The state of California residents have spoken and voted for us to be climate change leaders in the world, and this is how we're going to do it. 20% of the methane emissions in the state of California come from landfills caused by organic waste going to those landfills. So Agarman, along with the Harrisons, have been very progressive in developing facilities. We have been working on a very large compost center in collaboration with Limoneira Company in Santa Paula to build a first commercial compost center, and we started that in 2011. And hopefully, in the next couple of years, we'll actually get it done in Ventura County. Of the 12 counties I work in, my home county is the most difficult to get anything permitted. We started two years ago on a food waste-to-animal feed project with the assistant of Mike Harrison, our engineer, and we were successful in getting that completed this year. It was the first fully permitted compost center, I mean, first fully permitted solid waste facility in Ventura County in 26 years, and it still took two years to do it and about $700,000 in permitting costs. So this is no small feat. Agarman is successful because we set up sustainable collaborations with the communities we serve, the waste hauling companies we work with, and our sustainable agricultural partners. There's a whole movement in agriculture called resilience and regenerative ag. It's called climate smart agriculture. The biggest impact of climate change in the world is unpredictable weather. And what farmers will tell you about unpredictable weather, it creates unpredictable harvest, which will impact the food supply for all living species. So climate smart agriculture is really what's going to help us meet all these mandates, and we partner with communities like Thousand Oaks that are progressive, innovative, sustainable, working in collaboration with Agarman, which is a pioneer in organic waste diversion. We make over 300 different types of products with the organic waste stream, and you can go pick them up in Dr. Earth bags at Armstrong Nurseries, packaged right here in Oxnard, California. And we also serve all the big-box stores, like Scott's Miracle-Gro Home Depot. And then we're also going to be making animal feed for cows, chickens, pigs, dogs, and cats from the waste stream and fertilizers. So I know I'm out of time.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm here, I'm happy to answer questions. We're excited about the future and love to work with a progressive city like Thousand Oaks.
Good information. Thank you. Mike Smith, followed by Nan Drake.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Smith, the Director of Operations for Waste Management, and I am a Moore Park resident, but I am a Thousand Oaks kid. Grew up in Thousand Oaks. I've had the pleasure of serving this community in this capacity for the past 45 years. Always enjoy hearing the Harrison story of the family. I've known them all my career in this business, and I've watched the generations grow up and worked with them. You know, even though Waste Management is the largest solid waste enterprise in North America, we still like to work in the areas in which we do what the small-town feel. Pleased to say that we have worked with the Agarman folks at our Simi Valley landfill for close to 30 years. It was Cal Wood, it became Agarman. They're involved with the Harrisons. We compete in areas that we compete, but mostly we compete to stay ahead of all of the change in industry that would benefit Ventura County. They've got their exclusive areas in which they serve, as do we, and together, we make sure that we have whatever it takes to make sure this county is made whole. For example, you know, we've got 70 to 80-plus years left on our Simi Valley landfill. We worked on that, I mean, for many, many years. That was 10 years in the making. It's been almost 10 years since we got it permitted and expanded to have the capacity to handle the waste of Ventura County for many, many years, as long as there's still waste. And then Harrisons in the other end of the county have got the transfer stations and recycling centers, so we've got trucks going back and forth between each other, backhauling it and making it as efficient as possible. We've enjoyed the last, you know, like I said, been here for a lot of years, and there's a lot of change, but the staff has done a fantastic job here. Richard is a very experienced consultant for the industry, and there's a lot of new things in the memorandum of understanding that's been put before you to review for tonight. So we ask that the council continue your faith in us to allow us to take you into the future together as your partner. We work for you. We're an extension of your Public Works Department. The council has changed here, you know, some recently, but when we needed to make a change and the city's desire was to go to street sweeping, we happily took care of that, and we've got our vendor that we use, Venco, here with us today. I think your Public Works folks will let you know that we-- there's never a gap in street sweeping. We're available whenever it needs to be done. We have heavier street sweeping happening in the fall season or whatever the Public Works Department wants. So we're up for the challenge. We've agreed, to your point, Mr. Adam, about the-- and certainly the others, about the MOU. So we've dealt with the biggest points in there, what the rates are going to look like, how we're going to combat the future together to benefit Ventura County and the city of Thousand Oaks. So we stand ready and willing to be there now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, Mike, if we did the number one and we issued notices of nonextension and went out to bid everything all over again, would you bid?
Well, yes, we would. We would be disappointed, but we would certainly bid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Nan Drake.
Nan Drake, and I'm a resident of Ventura. And in 1985, I was elected to the Ventura City Council and decided I wanted to be a trash queen. So I've been working on all this long time in order to make sure that Ventura County is the premier county in California and is compliant with every one of the most difficult laws I think that they passed in Sacramento. We have done a great job in Ventura County, and I think it's because of partnerships, not only the Harrison partnerships, because they really put together a team of services that are going to meet all the needs and will actually solve the problems in Sacramento. Hopefully, they can look to us for the answers. You understand what's happening now in the world of recycling. It's pretty much in the dumpster. But you know what the Harrisons did? They decided to spend over $6 million to redo Gold Coast Recycling. Now we can meet every stiff requirement in any country in the world. And so we want to keep doing this. Our team is here tonight. I'd like to introduce them. George Harrison is here, who's the general manager of Gold Coast Recycling. His wife is with him. Mike Morostica, who sits on the negotiating committee working in Thousand Oaks. I think Bill Barrett's here up there, and Danny Harrison, who's also on the team. So we want to maintain all the good works that we're doing in every city, including Thousand Oaks. We're willing to negotiate and do the job and get what needs to be done, and we're pretty sure that with the Agarman team and the Gold Coast team, that we can do this. And again, I am here to answer questions and to just let you know, your city is very important to us. The Harrison history is part of your history, and we want to continue serving you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, Nan, if we do the notice of nonextension, would Harrison bid on the new contract?
We certainly would, but we have not a great history in Ventura County of doing that. We did that in Santa Paula, ended up going to an out-of-county trash hauler, and now they've had three out-of-county trash haulers trying to get the job done for them. So we see the future with a regional approach and staying local.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Appreciate you coming down. All right. Any staff response that you'd like to register?
I don't think we have any response, but we're happy to answer questions from the council.
All right, very good. And I believe Mayor Protem Beal of the Penya has the first one.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Yeah, it's a question I wanted to ask earlier. Is what is the difference between the food waste collection and the organics collection? One is for residents, one is for business, but are they one and the same?
So traditionally, the organics encompasses both of those, yard waste and food waste. Sometimes they're collectively known as green waste. More generally, now they're called organics, but yard waste is one component of organics, food waste is another component of organics. So from a residential collection, we've had yard waste collection for a long time, but under a new contract, we would include the ability for residents to put food waste in that same green waste or yard waste bin. As far as commercial service goes, we don't have a regular scheduled yard waste or green waste collection, but we would be adding an organics collection to the commercial service as required by the state. Those commercial entities could choose to use it for their landscape waste as well as food waste, but they would be required to process any organic waste they have, whether it's yard waste or food waste from their premises.
Thank you for the explanation. The commercial rates looks like would be going up significantly. And what is the timetable for the rates to go up? What is it, about 50%? Is it over the next five years? Or what is the timetable for that?
Well, most of the rates, or the trash rates and the organics rates are likely increasing primarily just by the CPI. It's the recycling rates that are going to increase at a higher rate than that because they're so subsidized or discounted currently. So when our recycling rates were first established, there was no cost for disposal of recyclable materials. In fact, they generated revenue. But now we're at a price where disposing of recycling materials costs as much as disposing of trash, and so there has to be a movement of those recycling rates to put them more closer to what the trash rates are. In the MOU that we have negotiated, we did not want that increase to be over a single year because that would have a dramatic effect, and so the MOU structures it so that those increases will be phased over the next five to 10 years.
Yes, I'm looking at a page, the commercial recycling rate proposal. It says 45% in 22, 50% in 23, 55 in 24. And that is what you're referring to?
Yes, the percent of how they're going to be tied to the percent of trash rates, and then beyond that, it would be 50%, 55%, 60%, et cetera, until they were at a rate that matched the disposal costs, essentially.
That is a pretty significant increase.
It is, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just before we go on, I neglected to mention that we have a written statement card from Joan Burns that will be entered into the-- Joan Burns that will be entered into the record, and I know you have a question, Mr. McCoy, but Ms. Noonan has something she'd like to clarify?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Adam. I don't think I was clear, Councilmember McCoy, in answering your question, so I just wanna make sure that council understands. The question was asked, if, if City Council approves option number two, to approve the MOU and direct staff to continue negotiations, can the council ultimately disagree with the terms and not approve the franchise agreement that's eventually brought back? Staff negotiated with the two operators, and what is before you in this MOU, it reflects basically the operators, as Drew said, the best and final offer. So, if, if you as a council support and accept the terms in the MOU, then it is appropriate to direct staff to continue negotiations and bring a final agreement back to the, to the City Council for final approval. What that means is that City Council is approving those deal terms in the MOU. If, however, council does not accept or support the deal term set forth in the MOU, then the appropriate action would be recommendation number one, which is to direct staff to issue notice of non-extension and go out for an RFP.
Understood.
Just wanna make sure I'm clear.
I understood.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. McCoy.
Dr. Cox, I marvel at, at your work being environmentally conscious. Can, can you share with me other haulers within the county that are as progressive as Harrison and Waste Management in that endeavor?
So, Harrison and Waste Management have most of the business in the county. The only other private hauler that operates in the county is Athens, who's a Los Angeles-based, also family-owned business in, but in Los Angeles.
Are they as progressive as the two, from your understanding with all your work with the environment?
My understanding is that they do, they have converted to completely natural gas vehicles, and that they do have their own composting facility. So, from that point of view, as much as I know about them, my understanding is that they are also a progressive company. That is not true of all the companies that serve Los Angeles. So, there are potentially other companies that might bid in the, in the process, that may not be as progressive, but my understanding is that Athens is a relatively progressive company.
I, just candidly, my concern tonight is similar to what we just endured with the dispensaries or the cannabis, where we were all keen on Legendary. And that was the very first vote, and we have been just struggling through this. Leaf is proactive, they jumped on it, you could see the character in it, the involvement in the local community. It's been a frustration of mine, and I see these two organizations that have been instrumental in community outreach, participating in all kinds of nonprofits. I, I just, I'm concerned that if we put this out to bid, we're gonna end up with someone who's gonna be cheaper, but certainly not gonna provide the same quality of service, and, and they're, they're gonna promise everything and deliver nothing, which is exactly what we went through with Legendary. I'm still frustrated with them, obviously, and that's, that's a great concern of mine. We have a long-term relationship with these two organizations. I'm, I'm all in the belief of competition and, and bid, but in this case, with the exception of Athens, I don't know that in this county, anyone does what these two do, and, and their facilities are remarkable. I think all of us have had the privilege to tour them and see what they're doing in relation to the environment. So, that's a concern of mine tonight, and I just wanted that to be known.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Thank you. Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very large franchise that we would be awarding. The question I have is, have we done RFPs anytime in the past? And do we have a point of reference as far as whether what the vendors are now saying we can have is a good, is a good deal?
Oh, the city has never been out with an RFP for waste hauling.
So, the two vendors have been grandfathered in over the years?
Yes, when we first went to franchise agreements, in nineteen ninety-four, there were a number of haulers, but over time, they've consolidated, and now, those two haulers that serve the city, yeah.
Very good. I, I agree with Councilmember McCoy. For me, the, the recycling side of this is pretty important, but I recognize that the cost will be going up quite a bit for that service. I'm, I'm just wondering whether we have enough to go on as far as the contract, whether it is in fact a good contract.
Richard Tagore with R3 Consulting, and we work throughout the state on both negotiations, as you're doing right now, and RFP processes. And unfortunately, there's not a very clear yes or no, one way is better than the other. A lot of it is where you're starting with, and how you're structuring your contracts going forward to comply with state laws. What's, what's in the MOU and the draft agreements are compliant contracts, compliant services, and unfortunately, the compliant services relate to higher costs to your customers, both residential and commercial customers. We're seeing that throughout the whole state. And, you know, the more recent RFPs that we've been involved in throughout North State, Central State, and Southern California, the rates have all gone up. So, that's unfortunately just a fact of what is occurring right now throughout the state to comply with the state laws. The residential rates have gone up, commercial rates have gone up. The commercial rates have gone up substantially more than residential rates, because they did not have the same types of services that you're gonna have to be having provided in the future.
So, irrespective of whether it's an RFP or staying with the current contractors, rates have gone up substantially across the board?
Yes.
So, we could go with someone we don't know, or somebody we do know, and probably maybe get the same result?
You, you may get a better result, you may get a worse result.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Cox, did I hear you say that Harrison and Waste Management were really the only two local haulers, and that otherwise, we'd have to go out of the county?
Um, yes, I believe the, the rest are located in Los Angeles County or further north.
Okay, very good. Any more discussion, my fellow councilmembers?
Oh, Mr.?
Mr. Jones.
Well, I'm kind of torn. As coincidence would have it, I was on the council when we originally decided to have franchise areas, and Harrison was one of the three that we had then. We had Harrison, I think Hillside, and Caneo Disposal. And I don't know the evolution of everything, but I know that, that we had GI at one time, and then I guess Waste Management bought out GI. You know, I, I know they're both good companies. Waste Management, of course, is not just a local company like Harrison. They're, I guess, nationwide, maybe even larger. And I, I sense the pros and cons of this. I've always thought that competition was good, and I don't mean any disparaging remarks here, because I know Harrison very well, and I knew Elmo Harrison very well. He was a good friend of mine, and I know it's a very fine company. I don't know much about Waste Management, but I, I'm really torn. I, I really feel that occasionally, you need competition. I never thought in nineteen seventy-one that, you know, we were gonna be having automatic renewals. I thought we would have more competition perhaps than we've had, but I don't know the whole history of the last fifty years. I, I have a tendency, especially since we seem to be having a hard time negotiating, that it might be healthy for all concerned to go out for bids for these two of them. But I'm interested in what everybody else has to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCoy.
Councilmember Jones, I appreciate your desire to see competition, and I, I'm in agreement. I like competition. But a known entity, and then putting it out to bid, I'm certain we're gonna get a lower bid, but we're not gonna have the same relationship with the customer service and the proactive approach that these two organizations bring, especially in this county. I just, it's, it's two organizations that I am amazed at every time I go and I see their facilities. And I, I don't know of any complaints, at least extended, to me as a council member, and I've been in this community nineteen years, and I have been highly pleased with the service we've received. So, I, I'm just concerned that we go out to bid, we're gonna get a lower bid, like, you know, we, we're gonna get sold a bill of goods like we did with Legendary, and we're gonna pass on an organization like Leaf. I don't wanna do that again. I, I just, I, if it's not broken, we don't need to fix it. So, that's, that's my feelings on that.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. My thinking is that when commercial rates are slated to go up by about fifty percent over the next few years, that we will probably hear from our business community quite a bit. And I am concerned that we will then be held, left holding the bag, so to speak, because there might be questions, why did you approve a contract that would increase rates by so much without going out for an RFP? That, that is, that is my concern. Second, if we are going out for an RFP, I have a very strong feeling that, yes, there could be a lower rate, but nobody will be able to measure up to the professionalism of Waste Management and Harrison, because those two entities really know their trash. And I really think that over the years and the investments that they have made, you've also made a very good impression on the residential customers. So, if we do go out for an RFP, I would certainly strongly urge you to participate, and certainly would have a rating system or scale system that would give points to companies that give back to the local community, that give to charities, that are actually involved in the, in the community. Because that, to me, means more than, say, a lower rate, depending, of course, how big the difference is. Knowing that the competition isn't all that tough in the region, I would think that Waste Management and Harrison would already have a leg up in this whole process. But at least, it would give me peace of mind, knowing that we actually went out for the first time in the history of the city for an RFP on trash, especially when the world of trash is changing so drastically, so dramatically, with rates going up to a point where we know we will hear from our business community. And then, we can tell them, look, we looked, we went out there, we looked for the best deal, and Waste Management and Harrison really are the best people in the trash business. So, that is my thought on this.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Well, just, just a moment.
Go ahead.
I have to go to Councilmember Angler, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Just a point of clarification for myself in terms of the RFP, is, is it strictly a low-bid RFP, or is it something that we can put any type of parameters that we'd like on it?
I mean, typically, it is not a low-bid process, unless you said it that way, and we would strongly recommend that's not what you do. It's a combination of qualifications, it's a combination of their work plans, i.e., how are they gonna operate, where are they gonna operate, what are they gonna, how are they gonna operate their diversion programs, their regulatory compliance programs, and cost to the customer. It's, it's a combination of, of those types of things. And the, the RFP processes that we've been involved in over the last twenty-five years that have gone very well, you have a balance of those criterias. The one or two we've been involved in that people have not liked the result, it's been where the cost has been fifty-plus percent. That is a low bid. And this is a service, it's not a, you're not buying widgets, you're buying a service, and so that the cost can't just be the deciding factor.
Does your, does your evaluation include community service and involvement and all the, the, the variables that aren't measured by somebody who's been in the community?
The additional services or add-ons, yes, value-added. You, you can put that into the criteria as well.
But do you do that when you evaluate?
If, if, if the criteria is set that way, you do, yes.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
I was, I asked the question I was gonna ask.
Oh, all right. And Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I, in relation to Mayor Protem, Bill de la Peña, you, you've been the longest-serving person active on the council. Have you ever been dissatisfied with either of these organizations? And if we go out to bid and get a lower bidder, are, are we gonna get what we've enjoyed this, this long? That's my concern. And I, I'm not putting you on the spot, but that's my question, I guess. It just, I don't wanna make a mistake on this. We, we built a relationship that is phenomenal, and I am not dissatisfied in the least bit. So...
Which relationship, yours and mine, or theirs? Okay. Yeah, I'm in my seventeenth year, and we've never had a, an RFP for trash, and I think it's been longer than that. And why? Because we've had excellent service. Nobody complains. And there is a saying, if it's not broken, don't fix it. But the world of trash is changing dramatically, and the rates are going up by fifty percent, and I don't think that our business community is going to like that, and it is, look, we had people up in arms over their electricity rate going up nine percent, up in arms. Now imagine, the trash rates going up fifty percent. That is major, that is really major, and I think we have the responsibility to prove to our constituents that, yes, we have the best deal for them. And the only way to get that, and by best deal, doesn't necessarily mean the cheapest deal, but it has to be the best deal. And by doing that, I think we can really prove to our residents that, yes, we did go out and look for competitive contracts, and, but, you know, Waste Management and Harrison, really, with their history, they have proven to be on, at the top of their game. And I actually feel very comfortable going out to an RFP, because I don't think anyone can really measure up to them.
Thank you. Well, let's go back to Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just have to agree, I think, with Councilmember Claudia, Bill de la Peña. I think we do owe it to our business clients in, in town to make sure that we do have the, the best deal for them. But I would, I would think we need to also recognize the relationship we have had with Harrison and, and Waste Management over the years, so that we can have that as part of our decision-making as well. But if we do not go to an RFP, there will be answers that we have to make to the, to our, to our business partners in, in town as well.
Councilmember McCoy.
That, that's true, and I guess my concern would be, if someone comes in at a lower bid, and because of the add-on services that we, we've built with this relationship with these two entities, and we don't go with the lowest bid, and we stay with Harrison and, and Waste Management, we're still gonna face that. If we go with a lower bid and we get poor service, I mean, if this is the driving factor, it's confusing to me, because we're gonna lose either way. We're dealing with two entities whose service is resplendent, we're, we're thankful for them. I don't know what's driving it, it's just, it's one of those things where I don't think we're gonna win either way. And here, we have something, like you said, Mayor Protem, Bill de la Peña, that we've got something that's working. I, I'm just, I don't wanna be driven by what someone's going to say, because as we've seen with these companies, even when we were in critical times, we adjusted the rates through that period. We have a working relationship. So, that, that, I'm finished stating it, and I'm, I won't speak anymore. I've, I've used all my words, I'd have none left for the rest of the year.
Got it.
If I, if I...
Mayor Protem.
If I might add, no, you're absolutely right, but I think this whole process will also perhaps encourage Harrison and Waste Management, at least it's my hope, to sharpen your pencil a little bit, more than, than you...
your pencil a little bit, more than you have. So that is the nature of having a competitive bidding process. And if we're back to square one, then at least we know that we checked to see if the grass was greener on the other side, and we didn't find it greener on the other side, and so we go right back to where we were. But at least we made an effort to look around.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I, you know, with all apologies to my good friend here, Councilman McCoy, the reason I was going to ask the question that Bob asked about the criteria if we go out, I think that, Rob, some of your concerns would be answered because we don't have to get the lowest bidder. If we go out, we can analyze the whole package, and we can put into the mix our good relations with Waste Management and Harrison, which if we see a bid that might look, you know, a little lower, but they don't, can't indicate that they could do the same type of thing that has been done in the past, I don't see the danger. And I think, you know, I know they're good companies, I know they're good people, but I think you can just get kind of locked in after a while to a certain relationship. I really think it's healthy for all concerned to go out for proposals and rock the boat a little bit, and, you know, so that people know that they are in a competitive situation. I don't know if they'll sharpen their pencils a lot, but they might.
All right.
So I would, I was on the fence, but I'm tending to look toward the RFP answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes, Mr. Bowers.
I just think it bears mentioning for the council, because I know there's a variety of opinion, and you're weighing a lot of different pieces. This is a substantial decision. Because we have never done an RFP here, and we have a unique arrangement that has established over time between Harrison and Waste Management sharing residential part of the city, it's important for the council to recognize that an RFP decision and election to move forward is probably likely a scenario in which you're looking at one operator. And now while there may be some efficiency of contract operation around that, there's also, that's also an important thing that the council should be aware of, this unique relationship that we've had established with both of these entities over time is in place because of how it has emerged over time. And so I just didn't want the council to have any false impressions of what an RFP process would mean or look like in that manner, because it would likely represent a change in that fabric.
What would it mean to the city to deal with one operator versus two?
Well, as I mentioned, I'll let Dr. Cox speak to it. I think, you know, certainly there's, her team oversees the contract, and, you know, our goal is to implement the council's policy here. So our focus on contract administration is really not the driving factor in the decision-making process. We're looking for the best service and maintaining the best service for our residents. But Dr. Cox, if you want to add anything to that?
Well, from a reporting standpoint, yes, as with contract administration, if you're only dealing with one entity, we haven't had any issues with reporting and compliance, though certainly managing one as opposed to two is probably simpler, but that should certainly not be any, you know, factor really in the council's decision.
Okay. I understand. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah. Mr. City Manager, couldn't we structure the RFP to keep the same two districts in place?
I think I would lean towards our consultant for that question. Have you ever experienced that in an RFP process?
Yes, City of San Jose, they have multiple districts. Residential is in multiple districts and the commercial as well. So you can do that. You could structure it by residential zone, a, two residential zones, a citywide commercial zone. You could do just all residential, all commercial, altogether. There's a couple ways you could do it. So there's, again, it's really, it's the direction you would want to provide.
And are there, having gone through those from an experience standpoint, are there drawbacks in structuring an RFP in that manner? Certainly sounds complicated.
That type of RFP process is more complicated. It's a little harder to evaluate because you would be evaluating different zones. You could also evaluate is a combined contract. So if you were to not go with a unified contractor, citywide, you had multiple zones or splitting the residential like it is now, you probably want to retain your flexibility to kind of pick and choose how best to put it together.
I'd like to add one more thing to that. If you divide the city into multiple zones and had two different haulers, one of the challenges that you might have is, if you've got two different proposals, one for more for residential than the other, suddenly, why does Newberry Park cost less or more than the Westlake area of town? So that's one challenge. The second challenge might be that there's the opportunity for rates to be adjusted between commercial and residential. In other words, in many communities, commercial subsidizes some portion of residential. So currently, we don't have the ability to do that because, again, we have one holler that does all residential, the other holler does commercial and residential. The rates are fixed together. We're kind of tied at the hip.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Finley. Well, what I'm hearing is that there's a tremendous amount of respect for Harrison and Waste Management, considering the long relationship we've had with you, and done a fine job. But what I'm also hearing is there's an inclination in the council to more or less test the water out there, test the market, I should say, because an RFP has never been done for our waste holler before. And we do RFPs for other functions here in the city. We audit, we do RFPs for our audit firms, for our transit companies, for our golf course operator, for our landscape services. So it's not unheard of by any means to do an RFP.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question?
Certainly, Mr. McCoy.
If we do an RFP, the likelihood is, if we try to split the two districts and we go out for an RFP, the likelihood is, we're going to lose one of these two operators that have served our city all these years.
That's true. I mean, a normal RFP process would be just one.
I don't get it.
It seems to me if we do an RFP, I'd rather not handcuff staff to these districts. If we're going to do it, we got to do it. And if it means one operator, two operators, as Mr. Finley says, we don't want to discriminate against any different area. If we're going to do it, we got to do it. And what I'm hearing is that the council seems to be leaning towards the RFP. I mean, we're dealing with a 15-year term here and a lot of money, and I certainly understand that notion. And it doesn't mean that Harrison or Waste Management or the two of them wouldn't certainly be the ones we pick. I suppose that's possible. Well, we've discussed this quite a bit, and I think at this point, oh, we have a member here that I presume wants to make a motion. Would that be correct?
Not necessarily, but of course, I mean, I'm looking at the two areas that we have. We have Newberry disposal service area, that's you, Harrison, and then we have Waste Management, which is a national company. So I don't see why we couldn't do an RFP with both areas in mind. I know we discussed, maybe it might be a little bit more complicated, but why shouldn't we be able to do that?
Well, I suppose I would recommend that if we wanted to try to do that, we would split it not by zone, but one for commercial and one for residential. And we could have separate bids on each of those. And if one contractor was the best for both of those, then one contractor would have, both services would have the whole city. And if one won the residential and a different one won the commercial, then you could split it that way. To me, that would be the simplest way, if you wanted to retain the ability to have two.
Yeah, I think that actually would not be such a bad idea to have that. I mean, I don't know what business arrangement Waste Management may have with Harrison. They might just do a subcontract with Harrison to do the rest of the city. Is that something that could be a potential as well? But I think for an RFP, we should probably look at then residential and commercial to give more than one entity the $20 million per year contract.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones, if you wouldn't mind, this is a difficult decision, and we're definitely struggling with it, as you can, as we can all see. Let me, if I may, just take a break here for just a few moments and see if we can't work something out.
Yeah. So just was mentioning, Mr. Mayor, like, if we take a five-minute recess just to consult with our applicant, just in regard, we have a lot of timing considerations that are attached to this, and just want to understand a little bit in terms of options that we may present to the council. I don't want to present anything without having a quick consultation with legal counsel and those applicants. So if we can just give us five minutes.
Very good. Take five minutes. Let me have our city manager address this issue.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Recognizing both the magnitude of the issue in front of the council, many of the questions, and seeing the council wrestling with what is admittedly a very big question, we consulted with our haulers during that quick recess and wanted to present at least an option for the council to contemplate. There are some hard triggers within the contract, and December 31st is one of those hard triggers. Thus is the reason we're here before you this evening. But I think, given the conversations that we had, I think there is a willingness, a city attorney will have both the haulers step to the microphone to make a verbal commitment, and they'll also do so in writing. and they'll also do so in writing if they have a willingness to extend to January 31st, a one-month extension to give the council a little bit of time to digest and an opportunity for us to bring the item forward. We have over a month before our next council meeting. That's just an option before the council, you can certainly elect to proceed if you'd rather proceed, but I'm always a fan of giving where we can have an opportunity, and thankfully we have a willingness on the part of the haulers to be flexible. That's an option before you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powers, for that option. Councilmember McCoy, what do you think?
Mr. Mayor, I would greatly appreciate that, just an extra 30 days would be helpful. This is, this is an enormous decision that if we move forward with a, to go out to bid, the likelihood is we're going to lose one of these two operators that have served us faithfully. I want to really look at this before we make a decision like that. I would appreciate the extra time, and if the haulers are in agreement to, you know, to put that down in writing, I'd ask the council if we get 30 days.
We'll bring the haulers up, yeah.
But I want to know from the other council members if that's acceptable.
What do you think?
Certainly, that would be acceptable to me. 30 days is not really that much time to really look at this more closely, keeping in mind that this is the biggest contract that the City of Thousand Oaks has, I believe, $20 million per year. There has never been an RFP, ever, and with rates going up 50%, you know, we need to really look at this much more closely.
Councilmember Engle?
From my perspective, I would say rather than 30 days, I'd go out to the 31st of January, which is really 45 days from now, so just give, you know, over the holidays and everything, let's go out to the end of January, and, you know, the first meeting after the end of January.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I would feel better, I would feel better doing that.
Okay, hey, yeah, appreciate the breathing room. I think this is a tough issue, there's a lot of money involved, and as you can see, we're struggling with it a little bit. I think we need a little more information, talk to staff a little bit more, mold this in our minds, so, good solution, and we need the, our haulers to come up and agree.
All right, for the record, Mike Smith, Waste Management, I am authorized to sign on behalf of the company as I did on the MOU, and we are in agreement to extend to January 31st or beyond if that's the council's desire. It's evident, there's a lot on the table here, and there's a few things that I know are taken out of context, and I know staff would be happy to explain. And just one last piece here is, it's not 50% increase, it's to 50% of the rate of trash, because currently, your trash is 100% rate, and your recycling is 30% of the trash rate, which as you saw, Thousand Oaks has the lowest rates for recycling anywhere in the country. So, they're talking about bringing it up to half of the trash rate, which is still lower than almost any, well, certainly anywhere else in the county. So, it's 50% of the 100% trash rate, not a 50% increase.
Those are the things that we need to look at when the time comes.
Exactly, these are clarifications that we need to learn more about, so that's excellent. So, you're in agreement, then?
In agreement, and we have already put that in writing and forwarded to Dr. Cox as well.
Excellent.
Thank you on behalf of Waste Management.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for the opportunity to give this a little more time. Mike was saying there, some communities, the recycling is free, so the commercial rates are higher, and I think that we're going to be able to show you those things, and you'll understand the difference in the rates. I really appreciate the opportunity to give this a little more time and.
Good. Harrison stands in agreement, then?
Pardon?
You stand in agreement, then?
Yeah, I am agreeable.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, then that's exactly what we're going to do. Thank you, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Noonan for, oh, yes, we do need a motion, I can't just, it takes five, doesn't it? If I can get a motion, how about Mr. McCoy, would you be so kind?
I move that we extend to January 31st.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
So, what that means is that either the first or second meeting in January, likely the second meeting in January is when we will be back before city council with, for the city council to make a decision. So, it'll probably be the second meeting in January is when we'll do this.
Very good, then we'll take the issue up again. Thank you for coming down. We'll get there.
January 28th.
Okay, we are done our department reports and our hearings, so let us go now to, oh, we had a meeting in the National League of Cities, and Ed and Bob were there. You want to go first, Bob?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and thank you to the citizens for sending myself and Councilman Jones back out to the National League of Cities. We represented the city in some voting that occurred, but more importantly, we were able to attend several educational classes, one of which I found very interesting, it was retaining local control of what we need to have be on our plate rather than the state's plate. So, that was one of the good takeaways for me was that particular class.
Very good. Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I have a couple pages of notes here, but at this hour, I don't think I'll read them.
Might want to condense that a little.
I think I'll just give them to Drew, and I particularly concentrated on affordable housing, transportation, and one was about having a downtown area in a city, so I've got some notes.
All right.
I'm sure will enlighten Drew just an awful lot to see them.
Well, thank you both for representing us, I appreciate that very much. We have any follow-ups from our city manager?
Only that this is our final business meeting of the year, if the council didn't notice, it's a lot of items stacked up as we had State of the City earlier this month, so, always a busy meeting, thanks for the council's patience as we work through some weighty items. Our next meeting is over a month from now, on the 14th of, 14th of January. We have a variety of items that are being, that are being worked on at this time. The one that I do know will be coming is wireless appeal, which will come, and that's relating to the Sunny Hill Wireless site. And that is all I have, I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a wonderful New Year.
We don't have a closed session.
We are getting to that, thank you, Mr. Powers, Ms. Noonan, if you would announce a closed session.
Sure will, it's a conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your work this evening, and we will adjourn to January 1st, 14th, 2020.
Well done, Mr. Mayor.